Call to order for Watertown City Council meeting for February 3rd, 2025. I appreciate the enthusiasm, councilman Jerrons. Please rise while Fire Chaplain Hank Rosso leads us in prayer.
Let's pray together, thank you. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for your great love for this community. And Lord, we recognize there's people suffering in other communities around the nation. These disasters with the air crashes and flooding and the fires and hurricanes and, Lord, we thank you, you love us, even when we go through tragedies, we can sense your love. We thank you, God, for your hand on each one in our department heads and the many fine services that we enjoy in this city. We take so many of those for granted. We thank you for those who give their time and their talent with meetings like this and the amount of work that goes on behind the scenes. I pray that you bless each one for their gift and sacrifice. We thank you for our first responders, the police and fire and how they watch over us, how they guard us, and we ask you continue to protect them, keep your hand on them, and bless their families. And we thank you for the unity and the love of community we have here tonight, and we pray for wisdom and understanding, and we thank you for these things. In Jesus' mighty name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interim City Manager Bob Zine, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Hollein?
Here.
Jerrons?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. The chair will entertain a motion to accept today's agenda. However, I have a couple of different changes. We are going to add at the very end a presentation from Todd Kayes for First District telling us basically their yearly update, and that's going to be at the very end. And then I'm also going to switch items 9B with 9A. So A and B are just going to be switched, so we'll have the discussion on the recruiting firm first and then the EAS contract second. With that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'm moved.
Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to accept tonight's agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, aye? Motion carries. We are now on to open forum. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to do so. Welcome, and while we all know you, but some people might, in the audience, might not know you, so please just introduce yourself and who you're representing.
Hi, this is definitely my first time up here. My name is Amanda Colhane. I am representing H2O5O as one of the co-steering committee chairs. I just wanted to let you guys know that we have been working together as a committee lately to get the H2O5O steering, or excuse me, strategic plan put together, and we're really excited to push it out here, but we also wanted to acknowledge the potential for not continuing with the city manager style of government, and so we wanted to write a letter as the committee to show our support that we would still support that city manager style of government. So, so I stopped rambling, I'm just gonna go ahead and read this. Dear Mayor Hollein and members of the Watertown City Council, on behalf of the H2O5O Steering Committee, we are writing to express our support for the city manager form of government currently guiding our community. As a committee dedicated to strategically planning the future of Watertown, we recognize the importance of maintaining a governance model that aligns with our shared vision for progress and sustainable development. While transitions in leadership or governance can be, can present challenges, it is important to acknowledge that our community has not yet had sufficient time to fully evaluate the effectiveness of the city manager form of government. Premature judgment risks undermining the potential benefits that the system can deliver when given the opportunity to function as intended. As the H2O5O Steering Committee, our focus remains on fostering long-term growth and development for Watertown. We trust that with adequate time, collaboration, and commitment to transparency, the system of governments can provide to be, or excuse me, can prove to be an effective structure for achieving Watertown's strategic objectives. To that end, we strongly urge the city council to stay the course and continue the path that we have collectively established. Thank you for your dedication to Watertown and for considering the perspectives of those committed to its future. Please feel free to reach out to any of the H2O5O Steering Committee members, and we can provide additional insights or support. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on something not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening, Mayor Hollein, council. My name is Danielle Lewis. Danielle, as most people know me, I am founder and director of Annie's Balcony Indigenous Outreach here in Watertown. We will be celebrating five years in September. It's a very small outreach, but I work mostly with the indigenous community members here in Watertown, supplying food, housing, job search, a number of varieties. But I've been working overtime this past week in a hurry. Since President Trump has taken office, as you are all aware, they have started the mass deportations of illegal immigrants. But at the same time, the indigenous community, as we know, has intermarried or had children with people that may or may not be documented, but may have the last names that are Latin or Hispanic descent. Now, that brings up most concern, and that started right away at the beginning of the week. The top page that I handed out in that packet, this is just a generalized, this is coming from Washington State, the Colville Tribe, but that's my sister state's, but it's a, this is an example of the PSAs that are being put out by all the federally recognized tribes of the United States as not. I'm trying to hunt down as many as I can. I've gotten most of the regional tribes. Sistin Wapitun is trying to make it easier for the indigenous culture. They want us to update our tribal IDs. Now, 16 and up get card IDs. Some tribes expire, some don't, but they want us to do this because the past history and culture of the Native American race has gone through this before. We had the termination era, we had the relocation era, we had the boarding school era. So we're, we're aware that this has happened before, but this is our chance to safeguard our kids, and especially those that may be enrolled members of their respective tribes, from being unlawfully detained. So Sistin Wapitun, I've, is making it very easy. Most of them are trying to do them immediately online, but you gotta consider how large or how smart these tribes are, so it might be a while. Theirs expire. This is a kind of a copy or an example of my tribal ID. Mine doesn't expire, but in order for me to get mine, they want us to update ours also. I would have to go to Arizona to do it. But they're not caught up yet, they're kind of a slower tribe, but most of them in the region, and that's all them. All those tabs are every tribe I've looked up, South Dakota, North Dakota, Nebraska, and Montana. I have all of their enrollment numbers for our tribal members to get in touch with me. I'm a lone person. I work face-to-face with people, so when I'm going down the street and I know there's a tribal member that I've worked with before, I'm giving them the info and to pass it along, but it's not good enough. So we're looking for some help. I'm working closely with CPS Evelyn Pilcher. She's a senior case manager in Wapitun Oyate, so that we can enlighten some of the foster parents especially to get in touch immediately with these tribes, to make sure that these kids are enrolled or to get them updated or get them enrolled. But that's the steps I gotta take. If they're, they know of just personal friends that are Native American that don't know about it, because right now, the people that I'm running into, they think it's rumors, but now I've got the actual package and the paperwork for them to look at, so that if they have questions, they, we can start the ball rolling. And I held a group Saturday at the Tower Apartments, and we got all of those guys updated or where we, what we gotta do with them. But that's what we're having to do. I'm in touch with Sarah Faust of Cottington Cares. I'm also working closely with Beth Lalum, too. They've got the, the same amount of numbers and stuff that, so when their clientele's come in, that they can make them aware, and if they need to reach out to me immediately, and we'll get the ball rolling. But it's so important because the last page, this was just a couple of days ago, and that's that, that comment. There's, the fear is this, is that while some agents, some officers will be legal, abide by the law, there's gonna be lone wolves, you know, just, you know, there's always someone, right? Wherever you go, there's always gonna be that one person. You know what I mean? And I worry that they're not gonna be more concerned and respective, and they're just gonna automatically assume and profile. Now, this is clear profiling. What I found very disturbing about is that they weren't worried about her legal right to drive, they're more concerned about her citizenship. If she's going down the interstate, I think I'd rather prefer to know that you have a license instead of, are you okay to be here? But they can, they wanted her tribal ID first, so that's how imperative, but this was highway patrol. Now, that brings up the issue of Watertown. I replaced my driver's license three times in nine months. Regardless, it's my accountability, but when the officers pulled me over, it wasn't your straight, da-da-da, what's your name, license, registration, insurance, and all that. I was harassed with, what will you, what will I find if I give you a UA? When was the last time you did math? These kind of things before they even asked me anything. And that's the kind of attitudes that I'm worried about, is that what they're gonna carry out if they know that they have someone with dark, darker skin? Are they just gonna automatically assume that they're here illegally, or they're just gonna be, you know, have that in them, that they're low-level racist and just go gung ho? Or, you know, these are the fears that we're working with.
Ms. Lewis, you've reached your five minutes, but I'll let you, you can wind things up.
Yeah, so in the end, we're just trying to make a lot of people aware. We've got these posted up with the 1-800 numbers if you get detained, and then we've got these other ones that'll be, like at the Tower Apartments, if they come to your door, if they come to your work, what your legal rights are. But we're just trying to make sure everybody's aware. They want the childhood, the kids that are in school to carry their certification of Indian blood in their backpacks in case they were, happen to come through. But that is, that is what I have to say.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on something not on tonight's agenda? I'll close open forum, and we'll go into item 9B, a discussion and approval of a recruiting firm to assist in the recruitment and hiring of the new city manager. We're going to introduce the chairman of the Succession Planning Committee, Rob Peterson, and a member of the Succession Planning Committee, Liam Colhane, to come and testify and kick this one off. So gentlemen, thank you very much for your service, and take it away.
Mr. Mayor, council, interim manager Bob Zine, thanks for having us up. We appreciate the time. I think you nailed it. I'm chairman of the committee, and Liam's part of the committee as well. We're also joined by Joey Nelson, Christine Carter, Scott Munger, and Amber Dahl on the committee. Obviously, all successful people in their own rights and their backgrounds and have experience doing executive searches and hiring, so we appreciated the, the call as a group of citizens that wanna do our civic service and, and help the city with the manager search. So, we met a few times over a couple of weeks. We did a review and amended the job description that was out before for the city manager, just to make it more concise and clearer for those applicants that wanted to put in for that. We also updated the RFP and got that sent out to a half a dozen different firms. We got two responses back. I suspect that it wasn't totally in the, in the realm for some of those larger firms to deal with something like this, but we did get two good returns on the RFPs. One was the David Drowne Associates. I believe you used them last time, and then the other is Robert Half Group. Very good groups represented both, both of them. For a number of reasons, we're recommending that we go with the Robert Half Group as our firm to help us find the next city manager, and we believe the process would be, you know, we pick a firm, they go out and they get their candidates, they help seed, you know, whittle through those, they'll bring us eight to 10 candidates. The committee will interview those candidates and bring it down to a group of two or three, bring those to the council for approval, and, and you guys get to pick, so.
And could you go into a little bit as to why you chose the Robert Half proposal?
There's a few different reasons. One, they're a national firm rather than a regional firm. They've got a little more power and a little more strength behind them for doing a larger search. They, they bring a little more to the table when it comes to what we're looking for. The DDA Group is very focused, it's a lot like Baker Tilly, they're very focused on regional public service people. They don't go out of that scope a whole lot, right? Robert Half Group is more of an executive search firm, and the, the committee feels strongly that we don't necessarily have to just find somebody with a lot of public service background, but we could also do very well by finding somebody who is maybe a CEO of a large nonprofit that knows how to handle the complex structure of a large business, but also understands how to deal with a board of advisors or, you know, city council members like that. So, we're looking for a broader scope. We also wanted a national search instead of a regional search, just in case there's that person from the Midwest that wants to come home, right? Wants to come home and build their roots here. Maybe they're out there nationally and they wanna come back to this area, but they don't know how to, right? So sometimes it's good to have that national view, and we've done that with other, I've done that in my experiences with other executive searches, and it, it seems to work out pretty well.
Thank you, and you had mentioned regional in council, I'm just, I know that this, this question will be coming, but we have had, we have been contacted by several, what I would say, regional people already interested in the position, and there was some question if we were to go with someone who was, let's say, more local to this, how would they apply, and would they still get equal chance of procuring the position?
Yeah, so in my experience, having done this many times in different corporate settings, you always end up with that possibility of what if, what if you got an internal candidate? What if you got a local person? What if you have somebody that you already know of? It's best to just put them through the same process, let them be vetted by the recruiting firm, let them do their job and their work. Maybe they find something out about that person that we didn't know, right? And it's good to let that come through the full process. So, I think they just go through the normal process and apply through the, through the recruiting firm.
All right, thank you very much. I will open it up. Interim City Manager, do you have anything else? Let's say, excuse me, so going forward, what would be the timeline? I know that this is gonna be a question as well.
Well, we're pushing for, I would call, an expedited timeline, right? We wanna, we wanna get this done sooner than later. That was part of the reason why we chose the Robert Half Group, is they had a better timeline. DDA wanted to take the next eight or nine months and basically reinvent the wheel. We didn't wanna take that, that kind of time. This process should be fairly quick in a couple of months, I would think. Be able to take those candidates in, those applications, do the interviews, you know, work your way through it. So, we don't wanna skip any steps, but we also don't feel that we need to, like I said, reinvent the wheel and start over.
And I know the Robert Half Group will be working with the committee, will they also be working with the council in any capacity, like asking us questions prior to going out?
I would have to believe that they would do their background on everybody, right? So they'll probably ask a few key people around the, the city. They'll get info from the, the committee, like Liam and myself and others, and then I would suspect they would probably wanna talk to the council a little bit about what you guys are looking for. They've also asked that we get, you know, input from the department heads and things like that as to what they want as well.
Yep.
So.
All right, thank you. And thank you, council, for giving me that leeway. I just knew some of these questions would be asked anyway. I will, so the official motion is going to be, now, it can be amended, but the official motion is going to be the approval of the Robert Half Recruiting Firm in the recruitment and hiring of a new city manager. That's going to be the motion that we are hire, that we are having today, because that is what the committee has recommended.
Yes.
Now, if you have any questions, we can start going through that, and I will first entertain a motion. Can I get a, a motion in a second? Councilman Peters made the motion, Councilman Jerrons seconded it. Let's open it up for discussion and questions. Councilman Jerrons.
This is just to add on what Mayor had for a question. I don't know if interim city manager Bob Zine or Rob has, has the answer. Again, we've had a couple people reach out looking for, when, when are we gonna do this? Is there gonna be a link on the city's website? Is there going to be, how's that information? Where will they find that information?
I think HR Director Nichols.
Oh.
I mean, we'll, we will put it on our website, yes.
Yeah, I would say whatever, whatever the recruiting firm would give us as an available link for us, we would get it on the website, probably under the city manager page, so.
And I would also think on, there is the S D M L portal that I would recommend putting it on as well. So can, let's just say, council, without any, I, I would say the entire council would be in favor of posting it on the website and putting it on the portal. Councilman Jerrons, the floor is yours.
I'm enthused that they're trying to knock our door down, door down to get a job. I like that, that's a good thing.
Councilman Peters?
Yeah, just a few comments to Rob's point here. I think they're being a little humble, because I think if I remember right, the job description that we used the last time was eight pages long, and we got it down to three. And so if we're talking about what we did at these meetings, and I was just a fly on the wall watching these guys work, but we're trying to streamline it, we're trying to look for somebody that's a CEO mindset. I think that at the time, eight pages in the job description was really good, and I think we're probably a step past that now. We're looking for somebody that's CEO, more private sector-minded, which is why the mayor pulled together this group. So I just wanted to put a plug in for these guys, because I know we were hitting them hard with comments and questions, and, and there was emails flying around, and thank you guys for your help on this. I think that looking at this job description, we're gonna get more candidates, because less is more this time around. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor, and yeah, thank you, Mr. Peterson, and, and Mr. Colhane, and all the others on the, on the group doing this for us. I would agree with the CEO mindset. I mean, there could be, who's, who's to say what, what the perfect fit will be, but hopefully this process will absolutely open, maybe spread the net out wider on, on what we can find for, for a leadership capacity. It maybe doesn't have as much governing background, but can learn it. So, I, I appreciate that mindset. Hopefully, how do we keep, how do we make sure that this group, for example, the Robert Half Group, that they're standard? I mean, they've got our list, our three pages, but I think it was mentioned that they're, what, you'd mentioned two or three applicants they might get it, whittle it down to, and then we can kind of, you know, interview those last two or three? Did I hear that correctly?
Well, typically in a process like this, if I might, i-if the, if the firm gets 20 or 30 candidates, they'll wanna weed out the ones that they don't think really fit us as a, as a group, right? They wanna bring eight to 10 of those to us to decide how we wanna whittle those down, right? And so we'll, the committee would take eight to 10 candidates, interview them, put them through the process, probably get, you know, personality tests done and things like that on all of that, and, and see what's a good fit. We wanna bring you three candidates, because if we bring you eight candidates, it's just gonna take forever, and you don't wanna interview eight people, right? The, the community wants to interview three people, and I think that's a, that's a process that I've used in the past in the corporate world. It's, it's a process that we've used at the hospital in the past. It's a good process, it works, that's what we're following.
And thank you for that clarification, because I might've missed that part, because I was in my mind, I'm thinking, boy, if we're only gonna have two or three, that we're gonna be, as a community, but as a community, we'll be doing, who knows, eight, nine, 10, let's just say, and then that, so I want our community to be able to be a part of this process with.
Right. And if we get lucky and we get 80 applicants, then maybe the committee has a lot more work to do, and maybe we have to go through 25 of them, right?
Sure.
I just don't think you're gonna get that many applicants, but, you know, if we have that much interest, then maybe we do. I just think it's important that as a committee, we get this whittled down before we bring it to you guys, 'cause you don't wanna go through that.
Sure. Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah.
Councilman Tupper?
I think this somewhat got answered already, but, so when you get down to the last, say, three or four, will we do like we did in the last time when we hired Ms. Mack to, where the community was able to come and, and sit in on some interviews, or actually just a kind of a meet and greet like we did out to the event center, I think, last time, when we had what we have, five candidates, I believe?
I guess that's something that we can entertain, if you really wanna do that again, I, I would.
What's your thoughts on it?
I, I would advise against it. I would, I would like to keep this a formal process and keep this to the committee and the council. If you wanna open that up for other people, key stakeholders in the community to do some of the interviews, that's fine, I don't have an issue with that. I'm not sure that the big public forums are a good setting for people to show their strengths, and you can get maybe the wrong vibe or, or person in those large settings sometimes, and maybe miss things or misconstrue things. So, I personally don't think that's a great way to do that. I think more personalized, formalized process is better, but if the council feels strongly that they liked that, that's something that we can talk about.
That's the reason I asked. I mean, I wasn't on council at that time, but I did go to the, to the interviews. It was kinda, it was good information for me, because I, of course, had some ties to the, the council before that and, and plans with ties after that, so, but to just open it up to everybody, I think it kinda gets.
I, I just, I, I'm concerned about making it a popularity contest. Yep. We want the right candidate.
Yep, thank you. And I do wanna stress something with the council. If at any time the council wants something else, just make a motion, and, I mean, if you want that public interview process, if you want to, if you, if you feel very strongly about meeting five candidates as opposed to two or three, at any time, I mean, I wanna empower the committee to do the work for us, to speed it along, and to do some of the to do some of the work that, that perhaps we might be too close to see. But at the same time, I want to protect the power of the council because in the end, we are the ones who are making the decision. We are the ones who are spending that money and we are the ones who answer to the public. So at any time, I want to assure the council, you make a motion, you let me know, you feel strongly about something, we'll see how we can make it work, but.
I agree with that, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that the integrity of the committee is left to do its job. And I think the process is strong.
And I did want to say two things about that interview process. I know that that went over well with some people. I personally, I would agree, I don't want it to turn into some contest of who interviews the best versus the one who is going to do the best at the job. That is something I feel pretty strongly about, not to say that that happened last time. But another thing is, and I will just say that I've been contacted, as I think others have, from some people who I think would be local candidates. And I just want to say, one of the reasons why I've never been concerned about going forward in Watertown, because I know some of the people who have already applied. And I would feel very comfortable hiring at least one of them right now. And I think that we'd be in good shape. But I feel very strongly as well that if that person is truly the best for Watertown, that like those local ties, that, that, you know, the local knowledge, if that is an intangible or a tangible that is so compelling for the council or for the community, that that is important above and beyond, let's say something else, then they will rise to the top. Yeah.
It'll come out in the process.
Yeah. And I, and I really feel like if to just, to not vet them through the same process would be setting them up to fail because there would always be that doubt in the community as to whether or not they truly were the best candidate. And I really do think that whether it's local or international, wherever, we just want the best candidate to move Watertown forward, committing to that process. And I do want to say something with the job description as well. I want to thank you for that work. That was something the committee identified right away. And I remember you guys were amused by how extensive it was and things that didn't necessarily need to be in there. And I think that's something that the council, I know that we as a council are going to take this opportunity to delve into some other things that I think are verbose, our governance and ends policies, some of our other policies that need to be cut down and streamlined to what we truly need to make Watertown, to give Watertown the best governance we can going forward. So I appreciate the job description. That's just one of the, one of the things that I know council will be doing as well. So.
Thank you.
Councilman Tupper?
Last time we went through this, it was kind of, we didn't know what we didn't know. It was, it was definitely a huge swing in government in the city of Watertown. I, I think we came through it pretty well. And when, when the mayor talks about governments, governance and end policies, I think we've learned some from the last administration that didn't work so well for us and that's why we're willing to change. That's the, at the end of the day, that's what all of us are sitting up here for, is to make what's best for the community, whether it's a local person, whether it's somebody from Florida, whatever. I don't think anybody wants to move to South Dakota from Florida, but not, not if it's today anyhow, but irregardless, we want what's best for the community, not what's best for me or not what's best for you or what's best for the whole community. And I'd like to, or thank you for your whole committee that's, that's gone through that and especially when you went to the job description because we probably got some more in the, in the city that look like that, that we maybe should look at and cut them down a little bit. So just personal, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, again, I just want to reiterate that the motion is going to be to approve the Robert Half Executive Search Company to assist in the recruitment and hiring of a new city manager. That is the motion. And Councilman Tupper will bring donuts next time.
I was wondering who it was.
So all those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Interim City Manager Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shetty?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have the letter of engagement for you in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Mr., and Rob deserves a tremendous amount of credit. He runs a very tight ship, so. It's an honor to be in this committee.
Yeah, he didn't even let you speak.
And to keep an attorney from speaking, that's pretty tough, so.
Thank you very much. We are on to item 9A, an authorization for the interim city manager and mayor to sign a letter of recommendation to the federal DOT, that's Department of Transportation, for those of you who don't know, for approval of the SkyWest proposal for Watertown's essential air service contract. We'll go to interim city manager Bob Zine first.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, in front of the council is the picking of our essential air service. Ian, with the, our airport manager, he'll give a brief kind of overview of what the airport board kind of came to the recommendation for the council. And then I know airport board members are here as well to answer any specific questions the council might have. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what, what, Ian, what's your official title? Airport manager? Airport manager, Merriweather? You can take it away.
So at the last meeting, well, we had two meetings, one for the official community presentations and then one to kind of let everything simmer and speak about the pros and cons of the respective bids. And, you know, numerous things were spoken about, whether it be interline agreements versus code share agreements, dependability and reliability of service and what was ultimately be good for a mesh between leisure travel and our business traveling community. That's, was the basic rundown and the meeting, the board, I believe, came to their decision within the best interest of what they believe to help Watertown and its flying public. I don't believe that there is any misinformation in any regard. So with that, I guess I'll open it up with, if anyone has any other questions regarding the meeting itself.
Why don't you tell us how long it took and what the process was?
Our first meeting took three and a half hours and our second meeting was about 45 minutes.
Okay. And you had presentations?
Correct. The first or second meeting.
Okay. And before, I know that we have members of the airport board here, but before we go into that, I would prefer to take a motion before we have testimony from that. So the motion will be to approve SkyWest for our EAS. So can I get a motion? Councilman Jurens? Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Danforth. So we have two members from the Watertown Airport Board, Dr. Gerald Reiber and Wes Wilkins. And they, I have asked them to come and explain more as to why the airport board came to the decision that they did.
I'll get started. Jerry Reiber, been on the airport board since, I think, 2018 or 19 and been through this process several times. Wes Wilkins is with me as well. I'm the vice chair of the board and Wes is the chairman of the airport board. Couple of things just to, to start out with is, you know, we don't, we don't take this decision lightly. You know, we all understand that, you know, there's, we had three actually very good applications or candidates for, for our service. And, and so as we looked through the process, we went through the interview, we interviewed all three companies. They came out on, on Monday last week. They all brought their, their hardware, their airplanes out. So we had a chance to look at what they would be flying in and out of Watertown and then speak with each of the representatives individually, looking at what, what they could provide for Watertown and, and what we could expect from them. The EAS process is, is fairly straightforward. The Department of Transportation has been, has been allocated or has been designated by Congress to look at, at basically six items. One is applicant reliability. The second is contractual marketing such as code share or interline with major, major air carriers at each hub that they serve. The preference of the, and, and preferences of the community, marketing proposal for the community and what they intend to do to market their service. Alaska has some exceptions for some individualized circumstances. And then the total compensation proposed by the carrier. So those are really the only things the DOT is obligated to look at and the things that they can consider in selecting the carrier. Prior to, I believe, 2022, total compensation wasn't part of the list. So they, they weren't even obligated to look at what the cost difference would be, but that's since changed. So as we went through their proposals and, and looking at the, at the services that we have experienced, and we have fortunately experienced both from SkyWest and from Denver Air Connect, and I would tell you that they both have provided us excellent service at the times that they've been with Watertown. There are some differences between them and I think that's where the, that's where the decision made to, for our recommendation. Our market share has not changed since I've been on the airport board as far as the riders, ridership. We are capturing roughly 17 and a half to 18% of the available traveling market out of our region, meaning we're losing 80-plus percent who go to Fargo, Minneapolis and Sioux Falls primarily. Mostly to Sioux Falls, we lose, I believe it's eight to 10% driving to, to Fargo and another probably approximately 15% or so driving directly to Minneapolis. So, so we're competing with our local market. And so we needed, we were looking at how are we going to improve the riding, the, the traveling market? And our biggest area that we are lacking is the business traveler. And so trying to work with the airlines on how do we improve our business travel, what's important to the business travelers? And, and so those are things that, that we, that we consider as we're trying to, to select who the, who the best carrier is going to be. SkyWest has some advantages. Again, Denver Air has provided us some, some great service, but there are some things that are lacking that, that, and we have been trying to work with them and they have been working with us to try to correct things. But, but I think it's still leaving us with, with the decision that, that we have, that we have presented with, presented to you. Full code share is one of the instant, or one of the factors that comes in. So the, the way that, that ticketing is done is a full code share is you go on to a major air carrier or to a, to a website and you buy one ticket from the time you get on the airplane to your destination. It's, it's a one itinerary, could be multiple stops, but it's all booked at the same time and through the same computer system. And, and SkyWest has full code share arrangements with Delta, United, American and Alaska Airlines. And, and they've had that for many years. The, there's pricing advantages to doing it that way. On an interline agreement, you basically are, you can, and we have that with, with, Denver Air Connect, is you, you effectively, you can book the ticket all at once, but you are issued two itineraries, one for the Denver Air Connection flight, the other for the major carrier that you're, that you're joining. And so those historically have been difficult to link together or to stay linked together. And, and so we have, we've had some, a lot of confusion, a lot of questions that I've gotten. And several of you have talked about getting phone calls from, from people who are standing in Chicago or somewhere else saying, what gate do I go to? And that's, that's been a recurring problem and, and we've been working to try to resolve that. You know, irregular operations is another, another one that IROPS, they call them. And that has to do with, you know, if you book your ticket and you have one itinerary, you call one customer service department and they can resolve the entire problem for you. Having an app that's, that allows for seamless booking, it allows for less confusion and, and when you book a ticket, do you book it on this part of the website or this part? That's also been an issue that, that we're, we're hoping, we were hoping would be, would be resolved and, and we just haven't seen that at this point. The commitment to explore Minneapolis, that was not requested in the original request for proposals. We did not request Minneapolis. That's why it wasn't bid from SkyWest, but we have had conversations with them. And, and so we have an option and that option would be through SkyWest and their Delta carrier to Minneapolis. And, and they have committed and we've received, you have a document that we've received commitment from them to explore that if that's what we choose. Some of the, the issues and, and again, I, I do want to reiterate, our entire board feels that, that we have had great service and a great commitment from Denver Air Connect. But I think, my opinion is that the size of their organization is, is preventing them from growing to the things that we need to grow into the next segment of our market. And that'd be to, to get the business traveler to the airport in time to connect to their next flight and get to their next destination. So that early morning flight, that, that afternoon return flight and, and connectivity. We've heard a lot of comment from the community about Delta Airlines. We have a lot of business travelers that have been with Delta for many years. They're million mile travelers. They're not willing to give up that, so they still choose to drive to Sioux Falls or Minneapolis to catch their flights because they can consistently get there and they get the benefits of their, of their arrangement. Also, operating with a full code share means that if you get on an airplane in Watertown, you get the miles for your, for your loyalty program from Watertown to your destination as opposed to in the current setting, you don't start collecting miles until you get to the hub and then you go from there. So those are some of the, some of the advantages that we saw over our current provider and...
One thing I'd like to add is that in several of our meetings over the last year to two years is missing out on, on business travelers. And we really struggle. We go through with our consultant for marketing and we go through the numbers and we're just not getting business travelers. And businessmen that I worked with in the past, I've asked them what their concerns are and they basically just given up. They said, I'm going to drive to Minneapolis or I'm going to drive to Sioux Falls because that the, the booking is miserable for their counterparts at their company to try to book tickets and they've just basically given up. So we had to take that into consideration, that that is the biggest gap we think we've got is there's a lot of companies in Watertown that we're not getting them. And right now, we haven't had a good way to approach them because of the lack of code shares. And that's a lot of them, they're astute enough to know what those differences are as opposed to an interline agreement. I mean, a simple thing, gate proximity to some people might not mean a whole lot, but when you go to the Denver airport and you come in on one end of the airport and you have to walk all the way to the other end and you do that every time. So all these other attributes that you can list in the code share advantages, they're big. That was the biggest one that caught our ear when we were in the meeting with them because they've got four full code shares, Alaska, American, United and Delta, whichever one that we want to operate under. And that was, that was primarily the big driver, but we also heard many complaints over the years that Denver is really a good company. We really like the people and they had great customer service if it was between eight and five. Well, most of the people weren't traveling between eight and five and then they're completely out, they're lost what to go do. They're, they're stymied. They're at the, the counter trying to figure out what to go do and are getting no help. I was one of those. So the lack, and then talking to them, they, we were talked about having an app because I know when they first came out, when I was a business traveler, and the first time I know my flight was coming in late and I was able to get on the app, people I didn't know about it till that time, and I could go find my next gate and know what time, if that plane was late and that I could get there on time and, and that the gate wasn't a gazillion miles away or have to ride several shuttles to get, to get to my gate. I asked them about that. They said, well, they're working on that. And I said, well, you know, I wouldn't even waste my time working on that. I'd just work on getting a full code share because now you can use the majors app, the major airlines. And a lot of it came down to this code share. I mean, there was all the little things that you can look at. I mean, the fact that SkyWest came in at a lower cost, that's for the DOT, not Watertown. And it's really a bigger deal with, in a four-year contract than the two-year. I don't know what else you have. I didn't, is there?
That's, that was, my other point was, you know, this annual subsidy is a consideration. Last, last or two cycles ago, we had selected SkyWest as our carrier. The DOT chose Denver Air Connect over SkyWest, over... The DOT chose Denver Air Connect over SkyWest, over all of the other reasons, because of the difference in the bid subsidy requests. And at that time, it was roughly about $3 million over a two-year contract. Our current subsidy requests between the two is, SkyWest is approximately $535,000 less than Denver Air Connect's bid in the first two years, and about $1.47 million less in the second two years. So over a four-year contract, we're looking at approximately $2 million less subsidy required from the Department of Transportation. I suspect they're going to be looking closely at that and those numbers in the next round.
Yes, and that's something we knew when we had voted last, I guess that was four years ago already, when we chose SkyWest at that time, because Denver Air wasn't unknown. And Department of Transportation overruled us. And they went with a lower cost. I mean, and that threat's always there. No matter what we choose tonight, you know, whatever the council chooses, the Department of Transportation gets the last answer.
Ultimately, our recommendation is for SkyWest, based on the reasons provided, with what we feel is going to be an increased ability to serve us with improved market share and the decrease in cost.
Thank you. We will get to questions here. I just did want to ask, I wasn't at the meeting, but the vote of the airport board was unanimous, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I did want, I'll wait to add some, I was gonna add some just personal feelings, because it's like I've talked with the airport board. The vote was unanimous, but this is, I liken it to a city council vote where you can only vote one way or another. And I know that, like, I know that the airport board is very fond of Denver Air Connection, they've been great partners. So it wasn't like you were universally in favor. SkyWest just had a better presentation, they had better things that you think would grow the Watertown market. It's not, Denver Air Connection has been fantastic for Watertown.
Well, I went into the meeting definitely pro Denver Air, until we sat through three and a half hours of presentations and asking questions and getting really clear, straight answers. A simple one that seemed to draw some debate with the other two airlines was what we do with Minneapolis and how do we petition the DOT and how to go about doing all that. And SkyWest had an immediate answer. They, there, I knew exactly what to go do and how to go do it, who to contact. Not that that mattered at that point, because we're just trying to, you know, find the airline. It was a Denver and Chicago plan, but it just gave me a bit of an impression how professional they are and what they can bring for us.
Thank you. And I just want to make that clear, because I don't know exactly, I don't know how the vote's gonna go, and I just want to say, among the community, you are not wrong if you prefer Denver Air Connection. You can respect the vote of the airport board and still say, I would prefer Denver Air Connection, because we formed a relationship with them, and they've been great. Anyway, a lot goes into the vote. I will just read something simply because it's not in the presentation. So this is an email from Cody Thomas, the managing director from SkyWest Airlines. So this was presented from the airport board to the city council. I'm just gonna read a couple sentences. So, "At the committee's request, we've secured approval from our partner airline Delta to add a daily flight from Minneapolis to Watertown contingent upon SkyWest being chosen as the carrier for your community." Skip a sentence, and you go to, "Additionally, we are agreeing to arrange an overnight in ATY, or Watertown, to offer an early morning flight that caters to your business travelers. Both of our partner airlines, that would be United and Delta in this case, are fully committed to supporting air service to ATY and are eager to help create schedules that best meet the community's needs." So I just wanted to include that for those of you who don't have the handout. We're going to open it up for questions, Councilman Peters.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna stay on this email here. I do have a question, because I've had a few people in the community reach out to me and just ask me what I know of this, along with the process. So is it, am I correct in saying that when SkyWest submitted their report, they submitted their report or their proposal without a Minneapolis option? Is that correct?
Correct. That was, it wasn't part of the RFP, because we currently are being served by Minneapolis and Denver. Every carrier has an option to provide alternates or alternatives. SkyWest did not put that in their initial proposal as a potential choice for us. When they came to the meeting, one of the first things when we discussed Minneapolis, they had already been in contact with their Delta airline partner and making sure that that was a feasibility for them, and they had gate space before even being asked for that. And then the process would be, we would, if the vote passes for SkyWest Airlines' bid, we would be awarded by the DOT Denver and Chicago. And at some point, we would need to then petition the Department of Transportation for a change of service request. And that, as long as there's no, we've done this before. We did this when we added Chicago from our two Denver runs initially with the Department of Transportation. And as long as there's no change in the dollar subsidy request, it's typically not an issue with the Department of Transportation. So you can't say you want to change locations and oh, it's gonna cost the government more money. It doesn't work that way. So as long as there's no change to the subsidy request, there typically hasn't been a restriction or limitation, at least in our past experience.
And they said that they would honor that change if we so chose to pursue that with no change in cost.
Okay. Thank you. Follow-up, Mayor. Did Denver Air Connection propose a Minneapolis route in their original proposal?
They did.
Okay. So I guess where I'm going with this, as I look at this email that was provided us just about an hour ago, this isn't a binding contract by any means. How can we be sure that SkyWest can deliver on a flight to Minneapolis based on an email?
Again, it has to do with whether, you know, they were the carrier that changed the route on the last time to get Minneapolis and Chicago, I believe. And, you know, we do have to go on trusting that that's something that they're willing to follow through on.
I can also add, though, too, that our primary concern and our focus was Denver and Chicago, and that's still what it is. I mean, this has just added fluff if we can, at some point, as we attract more business travelers and ask them, inquire, how many of them are really on board for us to go through what we have to go through to get a Minneapolis route? And I have no reason to disbelieve that they wouldn't do it, but I don't know that we'd get a guarantee with it.
If Minneapolis is unsuccessful, we can go back to Chicago. We have that option to change back. As I came through this process, I was comfortable with either location, and I'm still, would be comfortable if Minneapolis did not become, come to fruition. I'd still be comfortable that this is the right decision for Watertown, continuing on with SkyWest through United, both Denver and Chicago.
Again, I appreciate that perspective. That's really what I'm wrestling with here is, you know, what happens if this Minneapolis route doesn't, you know, pan out? I feel like we've had a great relationship with Denver Air Connection. I've flown with them several times, and I've been very impressed. And so I guess what I'm more so worried about or throwing caution towards is moving forward with a proposal, or I can't even call it a proposal, something that they say they can do without being in a proposal. That's my fear. The Denver Air Connection has said that in their proposal that they could do a Minneapolis run, which is great, it's in a proposal. I guess my caution comes from moving forward with this with SkyWest based on something that wasn't in their original bid. That's the fear I have. And I'm just being candid, some of that's rhetorical, but again, I just, I'm cautious of chasing away Denver Air Connection for something that I don't have in a proposal in front of me today.
The only thing I can focus on, though, and reiterate, is that really this, the whole proposal was Denver and Chicago. It's simply that.
Follow-up on that. But what, and I appreciate that, but what I'm hearing is that the people are wanting Delta, which comes from Minneapolis, correct? People are wanting to use their Delta points, which, do they get that benefit by going SkyWest to Denver or just to Minneapolis?
Only to Minneapolis. As far as with the interline agreement through Delta, at least that's how it works right now, is only through Minneapolis. And up to now, we have not, have not seen anybody able to book a Delta flight through Chicago or on their site or through their interline.
So it does sound like that does carry some weight, though. If the business community is asking for Delta because they have points, miles, it sounds like if the SkyWest proposal fell through, we're back to ground zero for what they want.
We would be exactly where we are right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Jurens.
Wes did answer the question that I was gonna ask, Mayor, and that is, did our original, did our original request include MSP, or was that just kind of put in as a little, hey, we might be able to get this if we throw MSP in there?
There was a scuttlebutt, you know, hey, would some business people, could we add Minneapolis? All it did is kind of complicate things for us at the last minute. That, well, yeah, we could entertain that. There are some people that feel strongly one way or the other, but we haven't gotten to a place that we can attract enough business travelers to really figure out what their choices would be. Because they really want code shares, and they want to get mileage, and they want connections, and they want to be able to have their assistants at work, get their tickets without getting so frustrated they're throwing things against the wall.
It was not in the RFP. Denver Air, we've had conversations with them in the past, and that's, I believe that's why they put it in their RFP, but it wasn't in the request for the EAS contract.
One thing I could mention to you, too, is that when I was getting my flights through Denver Air, I would use, there's a special Expedia. We, I had heard you could use Expedia, well, it didn't work. So then I tried to get on United's site, well, that didn't work so good. Well, then there's a special Expedia on Denver Air's site, that did work. But then when I get to the, when I got to Denver, they didn't honor my QR code. Then I had to go back to the desk and go print out my, so I mean, there's these glitches about getting a mature airline that we want for business travelers, and that's what we're hoping for.
Mayor.
Mayor, if I could?
Just a moment, I'm gonna let Councilman Jurens finish.
I'll finish, Bruce. So the app is powerful. The app is powerful, we get updates. I have flown Denver Air out of here ten, twelve times, get the big candy bar. I mean, it's amazing, yet you don't have the app. Everything you said about being, having to, I've done the OJ Simpson in Denver, and I missed one the other day. My bad. So everything you were saying, you can tell you've been through this a lot. I will be voting for SkyWest, but I want one more question answered. As of five o'clock today, are all four board members still four to zero on their votes?
I can confirm that, because I actually asked that, they're all four there. None of them are planning to change their vote.
Yeah, and really, the DOT is gonna make this final determination, and if there's a $2 million savings over four years, our arguments are really not valid.
And Councilman Beeler, I'm gonna go to you for just a moment, but just if anyone is out there wondering, the council should vote tonight because our recommendation, the community's recommendation is due February 7th. The only recourse we have, if we did not want to vote on it tonight, would be to request a 30-day extension, and there is no guarantee that we would get that. That would also be at the consent of the DOT. So I just wanted to clarify that if anyone did have a question. Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to sit through both of those meetings and the presentations. And as an airport board member in the past, I've gone through this process a couple times before, and, you know, we've had these same discussions with these airlines before. I'm 100% behind SkyWest, and just want to point out a few more considerations with them. They have a lot of planes, they've got a big fleet, they oftentimes have extra planes that they can use in the event that they would need one. Pilots is not an issue. They're sitting very, very well with pilots. That early AM out is a big deal, I think, for those folks, and especially for business travelers to get out early in the morning. But they also have charter capability if we wanted to do something in that regard down the road. But also, I think that they would have a better opportunity if we did go to Minneapolis with that flight. They have, I think they have a pretty good gate location in the airport there, too, that might be more convenient than if we went with Denver Air. And both of them were wide open to the possibility of going through Minneapolis. In fact, I think SkyWest and Denver, Air Connection, both would have preferred to go to Minneapolis. But I think, my opinion is that right now, I think we're voting on the Chicago and Denver application. And so I think the Minneapolis, I think, might be, I used to travel a great deal as a business traveler for years, and the Minneapolis flights that we used to take out of here through Delta, and their carriers back in the day were, it was great. That was a really good way for business travelers to go. But I think, you know, this is something that down the road here shortly, if that becomes an issue, you know, we probably need some public input on whether or not we would want to go through Minneapolis. My opinion for business travelers is that that is the best option. But it is something that I think we probably need to get some good, strong public input before we make that decision. But certainly out of the gate, we would be working with the Chicago and Denver routes. So there are other benefits, I think, to go with these folks, and I think hands down with that code share, that's a big deal. That's a really big thing, especially with those four major airlines. That reduces some complexity for the customer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Tupper.
So, you know, we looked before when we decided to go to Chicago, we kind of looked at Minneapolis at that time also, didn't we?
Correct. If I'm right. Yeah, we did look at that. And at the time, the way that the interline agreements were set up, and at the time, Denver Air Connect did not have an interline agreement with Delta, it would have been everybody traveling with luggage going to Minneapolis would have to go out through security, check all their bags over again, and that's why we didn't pursue it any longer. The other part was that making a switch to Minneapolis at the time, Denver Air Connect couldn't commit to what our flight would be and what gate we would have and what time of the day. We just, at that time, didn't know. And so it would have been a risk to say, all right, well, maybe we get a flight that gets into Minneapolis at noon. And that doesn't really do most people any good when you're traveling, especially a business traveler. So part of the commitment from the airlines was having a plane remain on the ground or run overnight here so that there's an early morning flight available and having their crews, and both airlines have committed to this, is having a crew here so we can take advantage of an early morning flight. But at the time, when we looked at Minneapolis with Denver Air Connect, the logistics of them getting times, gates, and the interline, they did not have the interline agreement with, or baggage agreement even, with Delta at the time.
Just to expand just a bit, I want to comment there is about having a crew available here. They did both, I mean, Denver Air and SkyWest agreed to double crews, which takes an effort on their part. That means that that morning crew can't, well, the crew that comes in in the evening can't fly out in the morning because of the number of hours they gotta lay over. It's 10 and a half hours on the ground, 11 and a half hours total. So they both have agreed to have another crew for business travelers if we can get that, because their more intent, I know when I did it, is to get out in the morning. And sometimes, if you're going to Chicago, get out in the morning for a meeting and get back by evening, so.
Another thing that's what we got to keep in mind, too, is that right now, the vote that we're gonna take isn't, really has nothing to do with Minneapolis. So they're both Denver and Chicago. What kind of guarantees do we have from either that will continue with a 50-seat, excuse me, 50-seat jet?
That's a minimum requirement for the EAS right now. So they've done away with the smaller aircraft. We had boutique with nine-passenger Pilatus airplanes bidding at one of our cycles, and they're no longer eligible. So I think 50 passengers is the minimum for the EAS.
That was one of my concerns, so, I mean, that's, at eight.
At a minimum, it's turbine jet service. But I believe a 50-passenger is a minimum.
And we all got to remember, it's, whatever decision we make tonight doesn't mean that's what the DOT is gonna do, so.
Manager Meriwether?
I just want to add that the EAS program doesn't distinguish between that seat capacity. So it could be turboprop or jet service. So any company that has the ability to bid on routes with aircraft for passenger service, they can bid, like your Southerns and your boutiques. they can bid, like your Southerns and your boutiques. It doesn't have to be fifty seat.
But both of these proposals we are considering tonight are?
That's correct.
But then also, just to clarify, there's also no guarantee that that stays there either, right? Cuz it's just a proposal. Cuz it's just like they can change from Chicago to Minneapolis, they can also change the plane, can't they? Or can, can they?
No, whatever is in the RFP or the proposal is what they would have to continue with, so they can't just switch up, yeah, they can't switch up an aircraft.
Okay.
Great. Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I get, well, I got a serious, may I, question, so I got to, you had mentioned Alaska, Delta American, and there was a fourth one, what is it? Plus United? Okay, so if I were to, if we were to approve Southwest, and, and I go into our, our airport here, am I gonna see a, is SkyWest, is it?
SkyWest.
SkyWest. If I, am I gonna see a SkyWest sign, and that's where I go, or am I gonna see a United? Am I gonna see a, what am I gonna see? Like, right now, I go in there and I see Denver Air, right?
If you, if you get your ticket through United, and you've got multiple airports you're going to, and when, when you go in, that, that flight number is gonna be United flight number.
I'm talking about the Watertown Airport, when I walk in there with whatever ticket I have. Do we just have, like we do now, one ticket counter?
Correct, so right now.
And the staff, that it all takes as far as the airline's concerned, all the same?
If we select SkyWest, they will be, the, the proposal is they will be flying their, the plane that they have under United flag. So it'll be basically the same thing as United Airlines, you'll see SkyWest Airlines doing business as United Airlines initially. And, and that's, that's what we would be approving, what you would be approving tonight. And it would function effectively as United Airlines, with SkyWest being their carrier.
And your flight number should have a UA prefix.
I'm confused, cuz what if I book a Delta?
You'll be connecting through them at, at connecting airport.
At that point, it's United through, then to Delta?
To the hub wherever you're traveling to.
It's a Delta hub, yes.
Councilman Peters has a clarification.
I'm gonna make this hopefully not so confusing, cuz I know where, where Mike is going with this. When you get to Watertown, and you go, you check in your luggage, is it gonna be a Delta booth if you're going to Minneapolis? And then if you're going somewhere else, is it gonna be a United booth? Or is it going to be a SkyWest booth?
It will be a SkyWest booth, but if, if we have, if we have the Minneapolis option available, that will be a SkyWest flying as a Delta airplane. And so when you check in, you will check in at likely the same counter, I don't know how that would work, but.
Do you need, sorry, I'm, I'm not hijacking your time. Do we need, no pun intended, do we need two different crews?
There will be two different.
Delta, United?
That would be up to SkyWest.
Manager Meriwether?
So just for clarification, if we were voting tonight would just be Denver and Chicago, it would just be United, so take the MSP off it. If, if we, if we went with Denver Air, then we're still seeing Denver Air, and they could do MSP or Denver or Chicago, Denver. Now, if we had to do, if in, in certain time, we get down there where we say, we petition the DOT for a route change, and it's MSP in Denver, then there would be what's called a split code, and it's muddies, it clears the water a little bit more, but there'd be two podiums, a United and a Delta, at Watertown, with cross-trained crew.
Councilman Danforth.
Well, that's clear as mud. So, do we know, when we've had flights out of here in the past to, to Denver and to Chicago, there's a lot of those people that take those flights, using those two places as destinations and not connection airports. Do we know to what extent there, there is being used, our flights are being used for a destination type ticket? In other words, I'm flying to Chicago for the weekend, or I'm flying to Denver for the weekend, in comparison to I'm catching a flight somewhere else? Do we know those numbers?
We recently did a survey, a marketing survey, so take this, it was around eleven hundred respondents, but to continue travel past Denver or Chicago, sixty-two point four percent connected, and thirty-seven point six percent was their end destination.
So roughly, almost forty percent used Denver and Chicago as a destination. So my question is, if for chance, we get down to the road a little bit, and we go to Minneapolis versus Chicago, I highly suspect that there's not a lot of people gonna fly to, to Minneapolis as a destination from Watertown, in most cases. I fly, I would guess they fly for connection.
One thing I could add there though, Mike, is that if we can get the business travelers, those numbers are gonna change.
Well, those percentages will.
Those percentages, those percentages, yeah, the percentages will change.
Well, that, that's, both is actually what we're hoping, is increasing boarding, increasing ridership, increasing market share, and, and then the other, the other part that we don't know is how many people, and I, I know quite a few personally, who will book a itinerary, they'll book the flight through Denver Air Connect as a round trip to Chicago, and they will book a separate flight out of Chicago, somewhere else, and back again, and that shows up as a final destination being Chicago or Denver. And they've just taken it upon themselves to book their own, their own itinerary, and building themselves enough time so that, that they can get to the connecting flight. And, and they take a risk by doing that, because if the tickets aren't linked, then if they miss their flight, they, they just end up eating it or getting rebooked. But, but I think the, the percentage of destination travelers probably is lower than, than what the marketing shows, because we don't have a way to track those people who book their own continuing segments.
So is it the highest likelihood that in order to improve our, or increase our business travelership, is, is the Minneapolis connection versus Chicago? The assumption?
I don't know if I'd answer it that way, I'd say it's getting the code shares. Minneapolis is something we haven't investigated a lot, we wanna get some more public responses first.
Because a, a lot of that comes down to your, your ability to get to an airport to connect, as you've mentioned, the earlier flights, and, and then obviously cost. So, have we gotten a commitment that ensures us that we will, or assures us that we will have flights earlier than what we have now to those airports?
Not that I'm aware of, yet.
They have both expressed interest in the remaining overnight to get us a morning flight out.
They're both interested.
And will, have indicated they will work with us on getting a flight that makes sense for Watertown, and we've talked about our preferences early in the morning as possible, but that also factors into the, how early or late the evening flight would come in for that crew to get enough rest time. So, so the times, the times have to be a little fluid, so that they can ensure the crew rest time is adequate between flights. So, so the, the later the evening flight comes in, the higher the probability they're gonna have to have a second crew on the ground to, to take the flight in the morning. If the flight in the morning, say, takes off at seven in the morning, we could have an evening flight return at as late as six o'clock in the evening to give the eleven hour time between the crew's rest, which is required. So, so we have to be somewhat fluid, but to get the time banks, and, and that, that's no matter where we're flying to.
One thing we've been challenged with, and we know when we were talking to business travelers, and it hasn't been a broad enough scope yet of business travelers, but many of them have told me that they're after flight times, they don't care about the cost. Business travelers, they just wanna get there, especially if they can go to Chicago for a day meeting and get back again. They don't care what the cost is, because they figure they're saving money as opposed to being gone two days. So that's what we're trying to strive for, but the code shares start, it was, all of this starts with the code shares.
Well, I will tell ya, as a person that's flown Denver Air, and I've been pleased with it, I will say that the ticketing has been convoluted and difficult to get to that point, but affordability for, for a family or an individual and non-business is absolutely critical, because I'm not gonna fly out of here and pay two hundred or three hundred dollars more for a family of five, I'll just go to Sioux Falls.
And I think we've been working pretty good on that. One other thing I could probably add at this point is that when we get promotions, and Denver Air has agreed to promotions, and they've told me themselves that whenever they did a promotion, they ate that loss. And in talking to SkyWest, when they have the code share with a major airline, they're gonna share that cost, one or another, because they have the clout with a major airline. Cuz we had asked them, are you still gonna do promotions? That's how we get people in here, especially the leisure travelers. They do, they are very cost sensitive, leisure travelers are, and maybe some business travelers are, but there's several business travelers, they're at the, they want the connections and they want the times of flights.
Our, our goal when we had SkyWest previously with a, with a, with ArcStar, if you remember those guys, when they were, when they were part of our marketing range, was, was to be within seventy-five dollars on a, on a fare for, within, within the top fifteen markets, and we were consistently hitting within seventy-five dollars of Sioux Falls for the same, same destination in our top fifteen markets. So, so I think having the, the code share with SkyWest, they were, SkyWest was able to work with United and, and help control the costs and, and bring costs down where they needed to be to be competitive within the market, and, and that's, that's one of the things that they have indicated that they were able to do, is that they will look regionally at what it costs to go from Minneapolis, from, or from Aberdeen, from, from Sioux Falls, and, and they can be a little more fluid in how they price their, their, their ticketing. So, so I think that the code share makes a big difference with SkyWest's ability to work with United. We had an issue last year on, on bookings that, that actually cost us boardings for probably four months until we were able to get that straightened out. Over the first part of last year was just, prices were, were incorrectly high in the, in the system, and it just took, took too long to get it sorted out. I don't think we recovered from those boardings until December this year.
That was United's numbers, yeah.
One last question, if I may, cuz when we ended up on the last go around on this, and we ended up with Denver Air, weren't we with SkyWest prior to that?
In twenty-one or twenty-three?
Well.
See, twenty-three.
Before we ever got to using Denver.
Yeah.
We were with SkyWest, correct? And wasn't our preference at that time to stay with SkyWest?
It, it was, but SkyWest came in at a higher cost.
I understand that, I'm just talking about where we were and what our preference was. We had a lot of good experience with SkyWest.
Yes, we did.
SkyWest came in after we terminated our contract with California Pacific, when, when they were underperforming, and I don't remember which year, but, you know, but they, they were approached, the DOT, at our request, terminated their contract the end of January, and SkyWest toolled up and was ready to run April fifteenth. It was a pretty remarkable turnaround. We had boardings that we had never seen before with regards to numbers, and I think eighteen thousand was our, our highest number with SkyWest, and, and we have, we haven't seen that since.
Councilman Shetty.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and thank you for your diligence in working on this, and, yeah, over, over the years, right? And of course, we gotta base our decision on facts, and, and what you guys have, have brought to us. So what I'm, what I'm looking for tonight though myself is, tonight's been a lot of, of course, you know, why, why SkyWest is, is the choice, and, and rightly so, and, and why to present it this way. Denver Air, you know, why we're making, why we're considering making that switch. You've already suggested what is lacking with Denver Air. I'm just curious, what is, since we've seen both carriers in Watertown, is there anything that they brought to the table the last couple years of their service that's been, that's been good or better than SkyWest, other than the size of their candy bars or, you know, whatever?
We got, we got presently surprised when Department of Transportation put Denver West, or Denver Air in here instead of SkyWest, because they had great intent. They're good guys, it's a good business. Everybody is, wants to get their tickets, they, they pretty much enjoy the travel, they get treated well, and when you get customer service between eight and five, you get really good service. Their intent is really good, they're just not at the maturity point that SkyWest is with the code share agreements, to help Watertown the best we can to try to increase our employments. We got the great terminal now, and I really think that, that terminal has drawn more airlines here that wanna serve here. So Denver, Denver Air's been good within what it is they can offer, and their intent is great.
So it sounds like, like, there's some growing pains, just keeping up with the, with the, the demand, and that, are they, is Denver Air a younger company than SkyWest?
Substantially younger.
Denver's been in the airline, or not the airline, the cargo business for years, they're relatively new into the EAS carrier market, they've got a, they've got a robust charter service, from my understanding, but, but they're relatively new into the EAS market. They, they've added quite a few locations as Great Lakes Aviation has discontinued, they've picked up a lot of their routes. And so, they're growing, and I think they're going, they're going well. You know, I, I went into this, I, I, before we started, I would be happy with either selection, because of the experiences I've had on Denver Air, you know, I, I feel a little bit different, is that I know how to navigate the system so I can book my flights, and I know, you know, I spent time, so I know where we're coming in, and it's just, it's just that the general traveler, or somebody that doesn't travel frequently, is not gonna spend the time to figure that stuff out. I have no complaints about the, the carrier, the, the quality of the service, I just, at this point, feel that, that if we as a community wanna grow our service, grow our boardings, and, and grow the business environment in, in Watertown, SkyWest offers a better option for us.
Thank you for that. As far as SkyWest, you know, we've got their, their pros, everything that's going, going well there, is there any, any issues that we've had in the past? Or is there anything that, that would be, to bring to the table? So far, they've been the golden child in this conversation. Is there, is there anything that we can, I like to see, you know, the pros and cons of both, both companies?
Kinda from my perspective, you don't know what you don't know. You know, I don't, I haven't heard or seen, so it remains to be seen yet. I haven't, I've poked around, looking at things on the internet, did a little bit of homework on it, and there's, there's some things out there that lawsuits, some other things, but they've got over five hundred airplanes, and what is it, seven, seventeen thousand employees? A lot, so that's a pretty big.
Five thousand pilots, so.
Yeah.
They, they just released a primer January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, looking at, you know, they, they added seven hundred pilots in the last year, they expect to reach their twenty nineteen levels early in, in twenty twenty-five. So, so they're back up to, to their, their pilot staffing. You know, I can't, again, you're talking about, about Denver Air, we've not had cancellations, we've not had issues related to the pilot shortage, they've always delivered, they've got a more than ninety-nine percent on time, unavoidable. You know, we rarely see a cancellation, sometimes flight delays, but, but their, their on time is, is excellent. So, so again, the, the service that they provide us, I don't have any issues with, I think it's more on the back of the house that, that we stand, stand to gain in user friendliness and, and being able to, to pick it up. SkyWest, when they were here before, they were very strong partners, you know, they had a mechanical, one, at least one time, if not maybe more than that, they flew a second jet in with a mechanical crew, and the jet came in, picked up the passengers, mechanics fixed the other jet, and they took it back with them, so, I mean, it, so they've got that flexibility, again, Denver Air has, has also done the same, they've, they've flown, they've flown flight crews in on, on a Metroliner to repair and fix something overnight so that they could be on time for the flight in the morning, so.
Manager Meriwether, you had something to add?
Just to address Councilman Shetty's question, you know, as for positives and negatives, Jerry just kinda touched on it here, the on-time percentage for SkyWest is eighty-one point six, and the on-time percentage for Denver Air is eighty-five and a half percent. Their cancellations are nearly zero, and SkyWest is roughly about one percent. I'd say the positives with Denver Air here is that they're very community-driven, and they care about, anytime we've got fundraisers or anything that would interest, or help the community, they're in lockstep, ready to help. To me, that goes a long way, and I just, in interest of everyone getting all the information, just wanted to point that out.
Councilman Peters also had something to add.
Well, I guess, yeah, I'm not quite done yet.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, with that, so like, the community. Yeah, with that, so like, community involvement, has there, they've gotten into active with the community? Is there anything you can, any information like that that you can point to that they've done to, any particulars, particulars in that?
They, they participated in the fundraising flight for Lake Area Pilot Scholarship Program several years ago, where, where donors would provide funding or donations to the scholarship program for the mechanic and pilot program. And then get on the airplane and they take you for a flight from here to Pierre to, to Mitchell to Sioux Falls and back to Watertown again in a big loop on the jet. We've filled that plane up a couple of times, so they've donated their, their aircraft for that, as well as provided funding for the scholarship. I think that scholarship is well over thirty thousand dollars for Lake Area Tech right now, for the pilot and, and air transport mechanics scholarships. So, so they're, they're a good partner, and, and Sky West also participates in, in the aviation days out at the airport when they were here, and I believe that they're on, on site every year at Lake Area.
Sure, so Denver Air was the one though that was, you know, did help with the VOTAC, with the Lake Area College or whatever.
They, they participated in that, that was the one-
Sure.
That was all part of that, that first event.
All right. And one, one final question, potentially, is whichever carrier, are they guaranteed, if they ever have a change in their, in their business plan, if you will, are they guaranteed to the terms of this contract? Or can they, can they prematurely pull out of this airport before the two-year or four-year period?
Yeah, and I was going to touch on that, Councilman, as well. The one big kind of glaring issue is, a few years ago, because of the pilot shortage, there was a ninety-day notice of termination service to twenty-nine different communities that are small, that are EAS communities like ours. I've talked to a few airport managers around and they've, that's still very fresh in their minds. We were somewhat insulated from this because of Denver Air and, you know, their incremental growth and being able to kind of shield us from that. But that is, that is a possibility. They could file for a termination of service if it became financially unstable for them. Now they're, now, I will say that they're contractually bound from the DOT to continue service. That doesn't mean that they could still pull out of, just say after ninety days, we can't do it, it's untenable.
So they petitioned, I don't know how many that were actually released from their contract, but I know there was quite a few that they were told, you need to continue service through the end of your contract. But, but they petitioned, I believe it was at twenty-nine airports. And then, and then what they were trying to look at doing was changing the way they'd service some smaller airports to a Part one thirty-five, different way to do it, and that hasn't been approved by the DOT yet, so. If, yeah, that was, I don't know how many they were released from, but they are obligated to complete, you know, short of bankruptcy, where they would cease operations altogether.
So that's just another follow-up then with that. What's the next, if, let's just say if that were to happen, how does it work then in, in airport industry, you know, as far as can you pick up a new contract with, with Denver Air? Or, or, you know, how, how does that transition look if, if something like that were to happen?
If that were to happen, again, if they, I'm not saying they, but if a company filed for a ninety-day termination of service, it would go to the DOT, the DOT would petition the community, the community then does not have to accept that. However, if they do, then it can goes out to RFP again, to all carriers, and then we go through the bidding process again.
It would look very similar to when we ceased operations with California Pacific, that, that immediately, once, once they terminated and it, that they were just unable to keep a reliable aircraft here, complete their flights, and we were at risk for losing our EAS eligibility because of that. So we, we petitioned to terminate the California Pacific contract, and then they rebid, and that's when Sky West was a successful bidder for that next round.
Councilman Peters, did you still want to say something?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm going to maybe round out my thoughts and comments here. I don't think I have any more questions, but thank you guys for your help on this. I mean, I'm not an expert in this whatsoever. As it stands right now, I will be voting no on this tonight, and the reason why is because I just don't like the way it feels like Sky West snuck in that Minneapolis thing at the last minute. I just, I just don't think that's, I have a hard time with that. I wish it would have been in the proposal. Denver Air Connections MSP option was in the proposal. I understand the benefits of both sides. I get how we're not voting on Minneapolis tonight, but we have a good partner in town, and I don't, I don't want to make it seem like we're chasing them out. If, if Sky West would have otherwise put that Minneapolis option in their proposal, and, and I could concretely say that it's going to happen, I'd feel better about telling people in the community it's going to happen, but I just don't know that right now. So that's not a slight towards you guys, I do appreciate all your help, it's just for right now, I just, I'm going to be thumbs down on this for tonight. But thank you guys for coming, I appreciate it.
Mayor, if I might?
Yep, Councilman Beeler?
Oh, thank you. Just a couple of things. I want to make sure we clarify that they didn't really approach us on the Minneapolis leg. That was something that the, the board brought up, because it's happened in the past, and mainly we're looking for the potential for business travelers. So it wasn't like they came in and said, hey, we want to go out of Minneapolis. It was hundred percent Chicago and Denver. And, you know, just, just a little history, when we did have Sky West in the past, they did a great job for us, I thought as well. And in fact, when we went through the, the bidding process after, when they were there, we actually had our preference with Sky West, and the only reason we ended up going with Denver Air was because of the DOT, because of the, the cost difference between the two. And now, the cost that has shifted the other direction. So I feel like the DOT is going to probably want to go with Sky West anyway. But, you know, I know, Councilman Danforth, you had some concerns about prices, and as I recall, Sky West was very competitive back when they were providing flight service for us. And they also, I will say, Sky West too, they're, they're interested in any kind of promotions we might want to bring to the table. You know, say we're short boardings towards the end of the year, they would be amicable to, to take a look at doing some promotions in that regard. But, and then you did see where they do have some dollars, I think it's twenty-five thousand bucks available to us for promotion, for marketing funds as well. So I, just from my standpoint, I'm all in on, on Sky West. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Shetty?
Yeah, I mean, this is, for me, this is a little challenging, just because, you know, obviously, the size of Sky West and, and even on paper, what they, what they have for, for all their, everything that's in line and play for them to, to do this, they, it sounds like they're the better, better service in, in many ways. Then I also see in Denver Air, just a company that's up and coming, I got to believe they're probably going to continue to improve some of these areas, you talk about using an app and things like that, they're, they're probably going to, there's probably certain limitations that can't quite compete because of their size. Then I see their community involvement as well, and, and does that come into play as, as far as, you know, with Watertown? I mean, if I look in the room here, I'm not sure, does Sky West have anybody here this evening for, for this conversation? I don't believe so. Denver Air does have somebody here to be a part of this process tonight, just showing their involvement with the community. However, then again, on, you know, just trying to take our community to, to, will Sky West take us to another effective level in travel, in air travel throughout the, you know, throughout the nation, throughout the world? That's what I'm, that's what I'm working through, you know? So then, of course, there's the expertise of, of the board and what you guys have already vetted and worked through. So I'm just, that's just what I'm working through. I'm, I'm still kind of processing this, this decision as we speak. So maybe the longer I talk to them, the sooner I'll get, give me, buy myself some time to get to it. But I thank you for your work on this.
And I'll just use my personal comment now as just one of the people voting, and this is extremely difficult for me, because, Councilman Shetty, when you were asking, like, what are the benefits of one or the other, and there's a huge benefit for Denver Air because the personal connection is real. They, the people who run the airline, the people who fly in and out of, you know, into, on day, on Denver Air Connection, they are personable, you get to know them. There's a lot to be said for having that personal connection with the owners, with the pilots, and that's a big deal. That's something that I don't think you'd get with a larger airline. And that's, that's definitely real. And then, you know, the negatives with Sky West, you go back a few years, I would hate to go through that situation again, but that's also something that could happen at any time in the industry or with any airline that's not specific to Sky West or anything like that. I mean, some of the biggest airlines in the world have pilot shortages and staffing shortages and strikes and things like that. It's a really tough decision for me. I would like to say thank you to the board. It's the work that you guys have done for the years that I have been with you. And Jerry, you've been on since before two thousand eighteen, because I was, I was the airport liaison when I was on city council, and I remember going to all those meetings and a lot of the work that went in to that. So you guys get paid nothing, you guys vetted this for almost five hours, and that's just in official meetings, let alone all the conversations that you've had on top of that. I guess one of the things that I just can't, personally speaking, it's a no-brainer, I would choose Denver Air Connection. I love the airline, I think it's great, I've enjoyed flying it, I've enjoyed the relationship that I've had with them, but I have to make the decision for Watertown. It's a business decision for the, for the Watertown Airport. What's going to help us get more employments? What's going to help our businesses in town? Because I've talked to a lot of the businesses and they have a lot of problems where they have people who want to come, they, they have to come to Watertown to talk to our businesses, and they'll do a search and it doesn't come up for a direct flight into ATY, because they don't even know, they don't know, they don't live here, so they don't even know how to look. So then that leads to another common complaint that I have had for years, because I've been the liaison to the CVB Board and the Bid Board, which is all the hotels in town. The number of complaints that I get from the hotels in town as to how many business travels, travelers they don't get, because they're all basically going, flying into Sioux Falls, they rent a car, they drive up to Watertown, they do their business, they drive back to Sioux Falls. And that is a very real complaint, because that's, that's a real thing with the hoteliers in town. They would love more visibility for a direct ATY flight in and out, because it would just help for that catchment. They'd come in, they'd spend the night, so you'd have ancillary bonuses to the businesses in Watertown, to the restaurants, the bars, the hotels, even the car rental companies, the taxi companies. And I will just say, I probably should have been more careful with giving out my number before I became mayor, because the number of phone calls I've gotten personally on my, on my cell phone from friends that I know who are in Chicago, wondering, where do I go to catch the flight, catch the plane into ATY? Because it doesn't show up on the, on the flight screen. And that's not something, I do not blame Denver Air Connection for that. They've been great, and they've done everything that they possibly can. And like I said, I would love to vote for Denver Air Connection from a personal standpoint, but this is a business decision for Watertown, and I just have to look even beyond the anecdotal stuff, such as people calling me up, wondering where the gate is, or the hoteliers and things like that, because you can't prove that. But you can prove the catchment rate. And I know that that's something that you addressed very early on. It's stayed relatively static. And I would love to see that increase in Watertown, because we are in competition with Sioux Falls in particular. And I'd like to go back to the days where we go to our ATY and we see twenty, thirty, forty, fifty cars from Sioux Falls with the number one license plate. I would love to see that, because I think that we can get back there. And I'd also like to see it filled with number five license plates, plates as well. So it's a very tough vote for me, because I would love to see Denver Air, but for me personally, I'll be voting to approve this. With that said, if someone is in disagreement, what you would do is, I would ask to either make a substitute motion to remove Sky West and put Denver Air Connection. That is, I mean, if, if the vote goes down, I'm just explaining what it would be. So if you vote against recommending the Sky West proposal, then what I would ask the council to do is immediately move to take a motion to approve, let's say, Denver Air. Or you can, or you can choose to make that counter, it would just be an alternate proposal right now. So I just wanted to explain that if anyone wanted to know.
Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I would, I have enjoyed and I have had a lot of respect for the Denver Air Connection service to Watertown. But like the mayor said, you know, I have to look at this purely from a business standpoint, not an emotional standpoint. And I think the one thing that really helps me in this scenario, well, first of all, all the work that you guys have done and the way you presented the, the issues and, and what you've all considered has been extremely helpful for me tonight. I didn't know where the heck I was going with this thing coming in here tonight. But the one thing that helps me is, we're, we're dealing with an entity that we, we do have a pretty good understanding of, because they were here before. It's not like, it was a big jump for us to go to Denver Air, because we didn't, we really didn't know who they were. It was a, a lot of risk involved in, in the unknown. Well, there's always unknown, but in this particular case, you know, Sky West was here before, we do have a good understanding of how they, they operated then. And so that is the direction I'm going to be voting. It really is based on the economics of it, but also the improving the operation that gives our customers a better experience, because that's really a number of the things that you're talking about, is different opportunities and a better experience. And I'm not talking about candy bars and free pop, because that is awesome. But the, the connectivity, the apps, the, the advantages of coming to, you know, with a larger airline with, with more planes, pilots. I just think there's a lot of opportunity there, I'd like to see where that goes and where that helps us grow. So I will be voting for the measure, or the proposal tonight.
Councilman Shetty?
Well, I just want to say, I appreciate the, we've already appreciated, you know, thank you guys for what you're doing, but also the, the conversation around this table tonight, because it, it sounds like a fair amount of us have came here tonight with, not really a, for sure where we're going to vote on this. As much as we appreciate all the work that's been done, but tonight has really helped flush out some, some, you know, just some concerns and just to get the facts, and there's some, some valid points made here too as well, that, that I believe hopefully does help us, even, even if it is a split decision, it'll, ultimately, it's the, the best decision for Watertown is what we're, our desire is. Thanks.
Councilman Jurens?
I'd like to acknowledge the two ladies that took time out of their schedule in the back from Denver Air. I've met them many times out here at the airport. Depends on what the DOT does, this may not matter what we do tonight, but the, the good service is appreciated. And if it does go, Sky West, I hope you apply.
I will also, for the record, just to state that I did text them to see if they wanted to testify. I happen to have Debbie's phone number, so.
All right. Any further comments or questions, counsel? Okay. The motion is to authorize the city, interim city manager and mayor to sign a letter of recommendation to the federal DOT for approval of the Sky West proposal for Watertown essential air service contract. If you are in favor of that, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no. Interim City Manager Bob Zine.
Here we go. Beeler?
Be, Beeler?
I didn't do that on purpose.
Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Chuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, counsel.
Thank you.
Then we'll see what the DOT decides on that. Item nine C is an approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Watertown and Cottington County for the county parking lot maintenance under the twenty twenty-five crack ceiling and chip ceiling project, project number two five zero six. City Engineer Peterson, thank you for waiting.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the city has a crack and chip project, and the county approached the city to add a couple county parking lots to the, to the city project. to the to the city project. The and this is the memorandum of understanding, kind of clarifying who pays for what. The the two parking lots, the is the county courthouse, which the county would pay 100%. And then the parking lot by the Coke softball complex is split 50 50. That's been done in the past, so just kind of clarifying it here. So I'll stand by for questions.
All right, thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the MOU? Motion made by Councilman Jurens, seconded by Councilman Chuddy. Open it up for questions, comments. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the MOU. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 9D is an approval of a bid award for the 2025 miscellaneous concrete project to Seth Scape's LLC in the amount of $28,753 for locations number three and number four and reject bids for locations number one and number two. City Engineer Peterson, we're going to need some explanation on this one.
Okay, this is the annual miscellaneous concrete project. Each this year, we're bidding four different locations. And I don't know what happened to my computer, but they were up on the screen. We had two bidders. The the bids came in a little higher than than we expected on three of the four locations. But staff recommends accepting the bids for location three and four and reject the bid for the other two locations, one and two. See, there we go. So recommending three and four. This is WMU has a water main project and these locations are kind of coordinating with their projects. So we recommend going forward with those those two locations. I'll stand by for questions.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the bid award? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. Councilman Tupper.
Engineer Peterson, how come there was no bid from Seth on one and two?
The they they bid they they submitted a bid, but they recognized there was a mistake, so they withdrew their bid. So there's no bid. It's no bid to consider at that one.
So just a quick question. In all fairness to both bidding parties, wouldn't it? Well, maybe I should ask the mayor or I see him. Bob Zine this, is there a option to reject all bids and go back out for bid?
There would be that option just because each one of those bids was over our budget, our engineer's estimate and the budget. The bidder of Seth Scape's pulling those two. I mean, what we would have done is we would have noticed it and we would have rejected them at that time. So them pulling it was just them recognizing, wait, that's not a good bid.
So in other words, and they were.
Right, we would have questioned it and we probably would have said, you know, is your math right? Or when we went to award it, we would have at that time noticed it. So them pulling it is kind of normal if they if they noticed it first.
Okay, so then I'm fine with leaving it the way it is. Just as you were way over. How big over budget were they approximately?
I got percentages about 20. Each one's a little bit different. There's 25%, 30%, 100%. And one was like just over barely. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Danforth.
Yeah, I think, you know, if I look at the items one and two on there that are so far overbid, without question, the appropriate thing to do is to reject those. The other two are so close, they're really low dollar items that even a percentage of small dollars, I think we're best off doing the award like proposed and moving on and then figuring out a plan for your number one and number two up there.
Any further questions or comments, counsel? The motion is to approve the bid award and reject the bid awards. So approve the bid awards on three and four and reject one and two. So all those in favor of doing that will vote aye, opposed nay. Interim City Manager Bob Zine.
Okay, Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Chuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 9E is an approval to reject all bids for the 2025 City Hall Elevator Project. City Engineer Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is City Hall Elevator Project. We received one bid. And it was about twice much of the estimate that we received before bidding. Because it's over budget, we recommend rejecting bids.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to reject that bid? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Jurens. Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so what's our option? I met with you guys over, I think, last week sometime over at City Hall. And by the way, thank you for that. It was very interesting going through their. I'm excited for that to get done. If Mayor, if they could, I'm not sure the public understands what this elevator project is. Maybe you just somebody just described that a little bit of.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, councilman.
And then and secondly, I want to understand, okay, if we're going to reject this, I think the the wordiness here is that we will have we will put money into it to get it started and get by, so to speak. I want to understand how many dollars that is. And are we just putting lipstick on something that or a Band-Aid on something that's just not going to last or? I was going to say lipstick on a pig and then I just decided it may not be right. So so now I said it. So anyway, that's my question is where's the money going into it? How much is it? And is it really a solution?
I'll answer that. So essentially, what happened is during the process, so the elevator at the new City Hall stopped working during the the project. So staff began looking at it and we had one of the, I guess, contractors come out and look at it. And during that process, it kind of kept adding up that they thought this was wrong, this was wrong, this was wrong. So at that time, it eventually, you know, essentially became we need to redo a number of things. And that's how it got to where it is with the bidding process and the larger project. Once we did see that the bid was this much over, staff did reach back out and we were able to determine that we do think we will be able to do some more just on the repair side and get get the elevator operational at this stage. And then probably in the future, if we would have more mechanical problems over and over again, that would be the time that we would then have to really look at a complete upgrade of the elevator. But we do at this time think that we can get between the $30,000 and $50,000 range on the elevator operating.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Jurens.
Who's going to be the first one to get stuck in it?
Are you volunteering? Any further questions or comments? The motion is to reject all bids. If you're in favor of that, you'll say aye, opposed nay.
Okay.
Officer Bob Zine.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Chuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. 11A is a second reading of an ordinance of the city of Watertown increasing maximum fine from $200 to $500. City Attorney Carrico?
Thank you, Mayor. This comes as a result of review through the recodification process. Basically, our max fine has been 200 for a very long time. The state of South Dakota did increase theirs for class two misdemeanors to 500, I believe, back in 2006. And so we're looking to increase that as well. I would just reiterate for the public that that does not mean that every fine will be $500. It just gives us that opportunity to increase the fine for egregious violations of our city ordinances.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve this ordinance? Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Tupper. So open it up for questions and comments. Councilman Tupper.
City Attorney Carrico, are we going to look at our whole fine schedule? I mean, when was that looked at last? Or I mean, you can tell this one 2006 when the state did it and we haven't even looked at our.
So there's two things operating. So these are our obviously our city ordinances regarding like nuisances, things like that. We also have a separate fine and bond schedule that gets approved by the Third Judicial District Court. I did review the file. The last time was the previous city attorney. Matt Roby did one in 2022. I did have a conversation with Chief Toomey today, so we will be probably looking to see to what extent we can increase those as well and make that application to the court this June.
Okay, so, you know, when we're going from 200 to 500, you know, you're not supposed to break the law anyhow. So don't break the law, you won't have to worry about it. But it seems pretty significant. But so that's why I wanted to make sure that all of our other fine schedules were in in line with with the state courts, so.
Yes, and I don't want the public to think that suddenly their parking tickets are now going to be $300, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Councilman Jurens. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the ordinance. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bob Zine.
Okay, Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Chuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 12A is a council approval of a building permit extension for the Ruins Apartment Complex located at 315 East Kemp. Our community development manager, Hanton, is here to kick this one off.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as stated, this type of request has been before city council before with previous projects, when a building permit for a commercial project exceeds three years or that it has been active for three years. And then after the third year, it's considered expired. So once that happens, then it has to come forward to city council for review. And and the decision then to approve it or if you approve it, to have it move forward. So with this situation at 315 East Kemp, the permit was issued on December 29, 2021. And this is for a 63 unit apartment complex where the former Palace Apartments used to be located there to the east of Foundation Plaza. So the developer was involved with other large housing projects or mixed use projects within the community and the downtown area. This project was on is been on hold and which has been a publicly known thing that council has received questions on since around October of 2023. And the applicant or and developer and owner, Jesse Craig, is here where he can touch on those items a little bit more. But as to why the project has been on hold. And then as far as the extension of the building permit, the developer is required to submit a scheduled project completion, which he has. And there has there is no definitive date of when the progress will or I guess construction will commence again. But he does have a timeline of what that looks like and obviously is motivated to get the project underway and completed. Staff has been in touch with the developer and has done inspections of the building and has a list of items that need to be. First, they need to be fixed. And then obviously, the the project to be completed as a whole just because that it has left or there have been items that have been exposed to the elements with it not being completely secured. So that is on the radar. The developer is aware of that. The city staff is they've requested some third party inspections already and will continue to work through those items that need to be corrected before, you know, the project will proceed just for all health and safety reasons for the building going forward. One last item, the developer is requesting that the permit fee of $12,341.50 be waived. So half of the building permit fee in totality is what ordinance reads if the permit is to be extended. So that is that that figure is that. Half of the original building permit fee, the developer has requested that that be waived and for the overall investment into the community. One more thing to note, the obviously, the project is not complete. So it does put in the situation of there needs to be an active building permit to be able to finish the work. So please do keep that in mind. And then otherwise, I wanted to touch on the two building permit extensions that I have been involved with in my tenure here was the Olive House, and that was in 2022. And they did end up paying the renewal fee, but that was residential project to the tone of or to the tune of for $164 for half of that permit fee extension. And then in 2024, we reviewed Stony Point, which that project, as far as how it was permitted, the building permit itself had a bunch of infrastructure improvements tied to it or had all of the infrastructure improvements. So the access road and the sanitary sewer, water, all of that. So that is unusual for a building permit. And council did agree to waive that building permit fee, which I believe was around $10,000. Oh, gosh, maybe it was more. Don't quote me on that. But the commercial things to keep in mind with the commercial projects is obviously they are large and the fee is expensive. And then they also do pay the 50% for the permit fee review for the for the plan review. So with all of that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Manager Hanton. And I just, okay, so the motion that is reading here is just to extend the building permit. It does not include the waiving of the fee. Would your suggestion be to move forward with the motion as listed on the agenda and then potentially take up the idea of waiving the fee?
Doesn't it have it on there there on that second paragraph?
It's only in the second paragraph of the staff recommended suggested motion. It was not on the official agenda as far as it was listed. I mean, but we can we can get away with that because if you open the agenda item, then it does have the recommendations. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to, if you're okay with it, I'm going to move forward with the extension of the permit and the waiving of the fee.
Yeah.
As one motion. And then if you want to, if council wanted to do something about that, they can. So we'll open. I would like a motion to extend the permit and waive the fee.
I'll move.
Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Tupper. And I would like to ask Mr. Craig, would you like to come and testify on any of this? Okay. I want to acknowledge that he's here. If there are any questions, I'd like to open it up for questions or comments from the council.
Councilman Danforth.
Well, this whole thing has been a bit unclear to me as to exactly what's all going on and why. And and it's certainly not clear to me where we are today with any of the the issues. I'll call them financial issues because that's my understanding on this. So without an understanding of where that's at and how that ultimately allows for and supports the completion of this building, I can't I can't vote on anything in a positive manner here. You know, the there was an obligation made to the city as part of that project that has not been fulfilled. And and yet we've had our our park over there that's been operating now for a couple of years. And so we've been without. If I can, Ms. Hanton, I just want to point a clarification. You said something that. You said something that's a 50% plan review fee. Is that part of that extension cost that is listed? Or is that in addition to that?
No, so that is upfront when we review a building permit when they're first submitted. So then, I mean, actually, yeah, because this would be 50% of the total, so.
50% of the total extension cost?
Total valuation of the original permit. So that would include the valuation and then plus the 50% plan review fee. So then that is how we come up with the building permit fee. So then this half, this 50%, is taking 50% of that number that included the, all these 50%.
So here's, have a number that's proposed that they're asking us to forgive, correct?
Yes.
Of that number, is part of that number the 50% that is required for the plan review? Or is that plan review cost above and beyond that number?
No.
It's included in that number?
Yes.
How much?
Like 25%?
Of that $12,000, whatever it is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So can the city reimburse these costs upon completion versus approving them upfront? I want to know that it's going to be completed. I don't want to sit here tonight and say, yes, I approve it, and nothing happens, or it takes forever to get done, and maybe we're back at this again three years from now. I don't want that. So and I'm not even saying I would agree to this, but so the question is, can the city say, here's what we'll do, you get it done, and upon completion, we'll reimburse you the amount to give us some leverage to try to get it, try to get it done?
I would, I guess I would ask our attorney or interim city manager. Would that be possible to basically make the forgiveness of the waiving of the fee contingent upon completion?
Actually, it would probably be a two-step process. You would go ahead and do the fee. They would pay the fee.
That's right.
And then at the end, they would come back before the council and ask basically for a reimbursement. We've, it's been isolated incidences over several years, but we've have, we have done it in the past. I mean, not necessarily with regard to a building permit, but in other situations, we've reimbursed.
So it would be a condition, conditional reimbursement?
Yeah, there'd be no guarantees. They'd have to come back and ask because it would be a whole, well, not a whole new council, but a different council by the time it was completed.
What do you say? None of us are going to be here?
You know, you know how I caught myself on that one?
Only the Lord knows, right? So what is, I understand the request is because of the basis of that, they've brought other development in town. I get that, and that's appreciated in long term. At some point, it'll bring benefit to us. But why is this needed? Why is it needed in order to get this completed? And I don't even know who to ask that question of.
Oh.
I'll point at you, Ms. Hanton.
So because they have to be, they have to have an active building permit to be able to proceed?
They could get by paying it.
What's that?
They could get their permit by paying the fee. Okay, so, so the question is, is
Gotcha.
why do they need the fee waived in order to proceed? Well, I can't answer to, I don't believe I can ask the gentleman, I don't believe. If you want to ask him up, that's fine.
I think it's up to him if he, I mean.
So that building costs me $50,000 a month to sit there like it is right now? So if you need the 12 grand in your coffers, go ahead and take it. I really could care less if you waive it or not.
Well, that's a good answer, then. It kind of solves my question myself. Thank you.
Councilman Shetty.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate what Mr. Craig is trying, potentially trying to do, get the building rolling. Again, potentially, I guess. I'm not sure what the plan is. But just based off just what we're listening to tonight, I had the same thought on, can there be a contingency on completion? How long is a, is the extension of a, this is another three years or one more year?
One more year.
So one year on the extension, okay. Another question then is, on the sidewalk project that we took care of as a city here oh, this last fall, whenever that was, we haven't been reimbursed for that yet by the building, all right? And how did we, how do we work out that reimbursement on the sidewalk portion of it?
That'll be done through the assessment process, so a separate process.
Right, okay. So but that still is something that that'll be assessed to the building.
Yes.
So we're going to get that reimbursement at some point.
Yep. So the, so the property owner has the 30 days after we've done the resolution to pay. And if they don't pay within the 30, then it goes to the county to be put onto that property.
And that's currently where that
That's where it's sitting, yeah.
assessment, okay. So we didn't get reimbursed for that portion of it, okay. So yeah, so I guess that's what I'm, yeah, I'm just, those questions I have and working through this. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Oh, it's City Attorney Carrickel.
Sorry about that. The finance officer and myself have been talking. And to answer Councilman Danforth's question earlier, we would be able to do an MOU to that effect if that's what the council desires as far as payment upfront and then reimburse at the end of completion within the year. Thank you.
Councilman Peters, did you have something? Okay. Any further questions or comments? I just want to make it clear that right now, if you're voting for this, you're voting to extend the building permit and forgive the $12,000, not even unconditionally. Just want to make that clear. So if you want to make it conditionally, then you have to make that motion. Councilman Peters?
Okay, thanks. Ms. Hanton, is the building safe? I know at one point in time, there was some bricks laying around. Everything's cleaned up now. It's not a concern of the city's at all from like that standpoint, is it?
Yeah, so when there were complaints about more so people breaking in, I feel like is where the general concern was coming from. It has been barricaded or concealed, whatever the word I'm looking for. And then as far as the corrections that need to be done, the developer is aware of those. But I believe the largest concern, and then obviously the outside getting that sealed up as you saw on the list that, and our building official, Reed Peterson, is here too, if he has anything that he'd like to add.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah, Councilman Peters.
Is, you know, not knowing next steps on this development, you know, certainly I want to do whatever I can to see the building get done with Craig Development. But is there a scenario where we shorten up the extension to like six months, maybe see where we're at in six months? I guess I don't really know. I'm kind of running blind here on what happens now. Like if a year is what we need to get her done, that's fine. But is six months helpful where we can revisit this in six months? It's not a motion. That's more of a rhetorical question, maybe.
How ordinance is written? I believe that you could set whatever you wanted to. A year is just what our building permits are typically.
Any follow-up? Councilman Tupper.
And I don't know if Mr. Craig's going to be willing to answer this question or not. And I do appreciate the developments that he's done in Watertown. But if we were to extend this and waive the fee, what guarantee we got that anything's even going to happen with it? None. Okay, thank you.
I'll just say something as a vote. I guess I would like to, I would like to see a motion. I think having it contingent upon completion is probably a very, I think that's a very nice compromise. I will just say, going back four or five years, I've been personally in the room where Jesse Craig and Craig Properties has donated. I was in the room one time where he donated $50,000 at the drop of a hat to the I-Cap Kitchen, and he made it happen. And another time, $20,000 to the Senior Center. And granted, he built it, but he didn't have to donate that. So he has been a good community partner, and I understand the frustration of the community wanting to see it done. I could probably say that there's probably no one who wants to see it done more than Jesse Craig. Because that's the way that we get moving forward. So I personally am not in the business of punishing people. And it feels like it would be a little bit of a punishment considering that we have waived some of the extensions on similar properties. So I think if the council would be willing to do it, I think it would be a very fair thing to do and to show some goodwill on behalf of the council to either waive it upfront or make it contingent. I'm okay with either one. Councilman Tupper.
I'm going to make a suggestion here in a minute, but first I'm going to touch on what the mayor touched on. And I was in a couple of those meetings myself where Mr. Craig was, you know, just, here, just have him order it. Send me the bill. And that had to do with the Senior Center. And I know he donated a lot of money over there. But, you know, there was contingencies that went along with that, that we get to use bathrooms at the ruins which aren't completed. My suggestion possibly, I don't know where everybody else will land on this, is if we extend the, and I don't even know if it's legal, so you're going to have to help me out with this. If we extend the building permit one year, we waive the fee for one year upon completion. If it's not completed within that year's period of time that we assess the vehicle, assess the property, that extra $12,000. I don't know if it's legal or not, so.
I don't, I don't think you can assess it retroactively.
Sorry, I know we're all mumbling around over here. We couldn't do a straight-up assessment, but we could do, similar to what we talked about in MOU, where there isn't payment upfront. And if it's completed within the year, there is no payment. If it's not completed within the year, then there would be
That's kind of what I'm getting at.
an invoice for payment, yeah.
You figure out the legal way of what I'm trying to say, so.
And I guess just for some context, so council has all the information, you know, as I'm sure you all know and the public knows, you know, is that the Generations on First, Parkside, and the Ruins are involved in litigation. In the meantime, there was a Chapter 11 filed by the Ruins, Parkside, and Generations, the motivation of which is to basically reorganize and get out of the situation that they're in. So at that point, right now, at the bankruptcy court, they did approve for Parkside and Generations to jointly administrate, basically giving the administration back to Craig and HME Property Management, so, or I'm sorry, not HME, CP Property Management, so that they can start collecting the revenue, doing the repairs, things like that, which will also flow over onto the ruins, albeit it's not finished. But that is the goal, at least from the stuff that I've read in the bankruptcy file. So I just want to provide that context, that they are in an effort to reorganize and get the project completed, get Parkside and Generations back on track, and do the right thing.
Councilman Tupper?
So that, that could be done through an MOU and waiving the fee upon completion?
Mr. Craig, did you want to say something?
Yeah, with the Chapter 11, I understand that that is a reorganize based on unreasonable creditors. It's not a financial burden on my end. I'm dealing with two unreasonable creditors that have been just unbelievably difficult to deal with. So that's why we went into that, was to preserve the properties, preserve the projects, get them back under control so we could dictate where their futures were.
Councilman Danforth?
Yeah. Mr. Craig, while you're up there, do you have, if we agreed, whatever we agree to here, do you have the legal ability to proceed with finishing that building as we speak? Or is that yet to be determined?
We have to put a priming lien together. So a priming lien will take precedence over any other lien that's on that property. It'll take about a $1.1 million to finish it. So we got all of that collected. Now we just got to get court approval. It'll take about three months with the plumbing being the longest to complete. And that's why we couldn't really do the bathrooms because they're all tied into the same drains, same water lines and things like that, so.
So here's my next question, and it's really probably for Brandy or somebody. When we talk about completion, are we talking about fully completed and an occupancy approval? What are we talking about? I mean, every room's done, everything's done, there's no more construction. What's the definition of that?
Yes, that would be certificate of occupancy.
And that would be like you or Reed Peterson going in there and saying, this is done?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay.
Yep, ready to be occupied.
Good. So if we were to, if I may, if we were to take Councilman Tupper's suggestion and we waive it now and have an MOU for the return on that if it doesn't happen, I'm just going to say this, we've lost all, all, we can't have, that's not going to be a lien on our part. So if something were to happen on a bankruptcy issue at some point, we would not, our MOU would not be fulfilled, right? Does that make sense?
I am sorry, you're going to have to repeat yourself because Kristin and I were talking, trying to
Well, you two have to pay attention.
We were talking about this, though.
Oh, okay. My question is this, if we do an MOU that says he doesn't have to pay it, he only has to pay it if he gets done with it within the year.
Right.
And let's just say something happens nine months from now. And there's bankruptcy and it's just wiped out, right? Not the building, but the, we don't have any kind of right to our, our fee, do we? Because we'd be so far down any
Right, yeah.
Right. So that's where I'm at. And I was more than willing to work towards a reimbursement of it as a reasonable compromise when the dust settles and it's done. Prove that it's going to get done, get it done, and I personally would agree to the reimbursement. And I still feel that way personally. I think that's, that's a give on the city and we need a commitment from Mr. Craig.
Councilman Shetty.
I would, I would agree with Councilman Danforth because I came into this meeting with a desire to work together with Mr. Craig. But yet, some form of, some form or fashion, as we've kind of talked through tonight, to where we would pay it upfront, but with a reimbursement upon completion.
Councilman Tupper?
However we figure this out, first I want to thank Mr. Craig for being here tonight. With good faith, he wants to see this project done, and so does every citizen in the city of Watertown. How many times have we all sat here and had people ask us, what's going to happen with the ruins? Are they ever going to finish that? I think this is, Mr. Craig's good, good faith that he wants to complete the project and move on. So however we figure this out, I will support the extension of this. But if we, if we give an extension and something that he can't afford to extend anyhow, then we've relatively accomplished absolutely nothing, so.
Any further questions or comments? Just want to reiterate to council that depending upon that fee, whether you want to apply it upfront and potentially forgive it at the tail end or if you want to not assess it upfront or potentially assess it at the end, however you want to do, that's not currently in the motion. So if you want either of those, you have to make that motion right now. Councilman Tupper?
One more comment on that. And right now, we're looking at a possible solution to complete the building. We're not out of time. I mean, we have waived, if I remember right, Brandy said we have waived the fees on Mr. Drake's property out there
Yep.
for his completion. So it's not like it's costing the city $12,000. There is some administ- There is some administration parts to it, but it's not really costing the city anything, so we're, we're just charging a fee that probably more absorbent than what, what the cost of the, the, the work will do to complete it, so.
Councilman Shuddy?
And yes, one thing to keep in mind is, and of course, financial matters, it's, it's always challenging. I can only imagine what Mr. Craig is going through on this. However, you know, as a city, we did, I believe it was around three years ago on Park Place, I believe it was, we split a concrete project sidewalk. I think he was asking $80,000 and somewhere, give or take, and we split it, and as a city, we paid 40 grand towards that. So, I do know that we, as a city, have already, you know, tried to partner and help out, you know, paid 40 grand towards that project and now paid for the sidewalk in front of the ruins. So, we have been trying to, trying to, trying to work through this. So, I just am out of this here, I just, if we would collect this up front and then as incentive to, you know, to get reimbursed at the end, so.
Mr. Craig, you wanna say something? I think that might've been the bump out?
No, Brandy was asking me about what that $40,000 was for. It was actually a big infrastructure Watertown Municipal Utility culvert that was in the city sidewalk. It wasn't my bill, it was actually the city's bill, but Watertown Municipal Utilities would not cover any portion of it. So, you guys covered half, I covered half, but it wasn't, wasn't on my sight.
It was, yeah, within the right of way. Was it one of the old, it was a culvert, or was it the old heating system?
It's that big, huge container underneath the, we couldn't, we had to actually slide the building back. We had to move the building because of it.
Oh, yeah.
I did pay for the, I did pay for the bump out on lofts and the trees.
He wanted to do it at Parkside.
Councilman Shuddy, continued?
So, yeah, so yeah, thank you for, to clarify that, you were saying Craig Properties was billed by the utilities, and then we just re, we paid for half of it? Is that how it played out then, or?
Yeah, we had to do that on the lines that went diagonally across the back parking lot of lofts, too. That was $17,000 and Watertown Municipal, or Watertown Development Company paid half, I paid half, because utilities would not pay anything.
Okay. Councilman Danforth?
I gotta ask myself, why we have policies, why we have practices? Because if we're, what do we tell the next people? Why don't we just get rid of that requirement for extension fees then if that's the case? Because how do you determine? There's always something that dictates the need for an extension, whatever that is. How do we tell the next person, "Yeah, you have to pay"? You know, where's the hard, I mean, why do we even have a policy? If we aren't going to, to follow through with it then? Then nix it, get it off the books. And I'm serious about that. And I don't know, and I'm, and I'm serious, I don't know if the fee is, is even reasonable. First thing that came to my mind was, "Seems awful damn high." It really does. I don't know how we calculate it, but we're, that's, tonight, that's not what we're being asked to do. But I look at that and I go, "All right, you get an extension on a building that costs you 200 bucks? All right. Get an extension on a building like this?" And that seems absorbent to me. It seems like, like it really needs to be more focused on what our costs are in order to process and not just a percentage of, of a building permit. So, I'm, that bothers me from that standpoint. But tonight, I can't do a darn thing about that. But I do ask the question, what do we tell the next person? When they come in and say, you know, 500 bucks to them or 1,000 bucks to them, hell of a lot of money on a smaller project. What do we tell them? So, if we're not gonna do these things, there's, because they're large projects, well then we better have some different language or different policies in place. And I'm willing, and I think I will do this, Mayor, is I'm willing to, to vote in favor of this with modification to the, the motion, that it's a reimbursement via the MOU upon completion. And to me, that's fair in light of where we're at. You're right, we wanna get it done, we, I think we wanna support the, the completion. We have supported these developments with TIFs and, and loan. It's not like we haven't done part of this. So, I'm willing to do that, so help me with the motion. I would like to modify the motion to include the, the waiving of the fee via reimbursement upon completion. That sound right?
Yes.
So, it's the end, it's all done, we're gonna give it back. And your mechanism for doing that, if that's an MOU or, or whatever it is, that's, so, that's-
Yep. Interim City Manager?
I think my suggestion would be then you would not waive the fee and you would give the staff direction to come back with an MOU at the next meeting, that would just clarify that reimbursement process upon the completion. So, essentially, the fee would be paid now up front to get the permit, and then we'll work to get an MOU at the next meeting. That would state that clearly, that upon the completion, we would then reimburse.
Do we need a motion at the table?
Hmm, I think we, well-
It's up to you.
Hmm, why can't we just do, I mean, hmm, I suppose you want the legal language of the MOU.
Can they just make it a motion?
I think that you can just make it a motion, just say, "We will," okay, so, "We will reimburse the cost of the, of the, we will reimburse the cost upon certification by Reed Peterson of occupancy," or, "Upon certification of occupancy," within a year.
And that's what I wanted to mention, too, is that if the project is not complete within a year, you still, it'll come back and half of that permit fee will be due again. So, potentially, you know, you don't have to miss, like, if you, if you give a year of leeway, then you would collect that, knowing that, having this conversation, that, that would be due.
And I understood, right, when I said that, that the words at the end, "Within a year" is extraneous and unnecessary, because the building permit is only valid-
Yes, yeah.
-have to come back and reapply anyway. So, I would just say, "Let's make the motion to amend to say, with the waiving of the fee contingent upon certification of occupancy."
Reim, with reimbursement of the fee, sorry.
Reimbursement of the fee upon certifica, uh, cer- certification, certification of occupancy.
Right. Mayor, I gotta, I do have a question. Mayor, you had mentioned something about, you know, there's, that MOU, let's call it that, that's what we're gonna do.
Sure.
Does that carry over and, and create the same obligation to the next seated council? They can't.
If you guys are wording it in the motion, we don't even need a MOU. It's just, you guys are granting the extension, payment of the fee to be reimbursed if a certificate of occupancy is issued at the end of the year.
Okay, and how, how do you control that, monitor that, and, and know that, that-
Community development would need to notify finance that that requirement was met. So, when the permit is up, if it hasn't reached completion, then there will be no reimbursement. But if it is completed, then community development would let finance know and we would issue a reimbursement.
Okay, so with the reimbursement, I want to just make, here's what I wanna make sure. I wanna make sure that if we make a commitment tonight, that no matter who sits on this side, it gets followed through.
It will, yep, with your motion. That was what I would use to do the voucher, to do the payment, would be this motion right here.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion or to amend to reimburse the fee upon certification, certification of occupancy. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Tupper. So, we are just on discussion of the amendment now, just the amendment. Councilman Tupper, did you wanna comment on the amendment?
Turn to the floor, so follow up on the amendment.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll get, I'll get right back to you. So, is there any question on what the amendment is? It is basically to reimburse the fee upon certification of occupancy. Any question on that?
Reissue the building permit?
Well, no, this is just the amendment. The amendment is the reimbursement. Any further question on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Now, we are on to item 9A as amended. Councilman Tupper?
My question is to Director Hampton, and somewhat on, on Councilman Danforth's point. So, this is on a percentage of the total, so let's just say he didn't quite get it done in that three-year period and all he needs is an extension for three weeks. Now, we're using a half of the percentage. I mean, I can see Mr. Craig taking close to the whole year to finish that building, so that's, but are we gonna charge that same person half of the total for a week or two weeks or two-month extension? That's what we really gotta look at in our ordinance, and, and I would agree with, with Councilman Danforth on that, that maybe that's not the correct way of doing it, so.
Can, can I comment on that? I agree, and I also think that it would be something, you know, obviously, this was a $9.8 million project, so it's a larger scale, and then because of the valuation, that that fee is so much as well. And staff, you know, we're doing the plan review and obviously with the more, with the larger project and intricacies of the inspections and all of that, that it requires, obviously, it makes sense that it is more, but I do, I mean, when you really think about it, the overall, now, when you're doing a overall valuation of a project that is $9.8 million, that isn't that large of a fee in the grand scheme of a project. But then, yeah, as they are, you know, they, they're in the middle of it and it, obviously, it needs to be finished. And so, then it's just a matter of, at what point does it get finished and what assurances does the city have, other than the, you know, kinda the, kinda the punishment or the incentive of that fee, and then what you guys are discussing, the reimbursement. But I do think that, that we should look at reworking that language. Now, going back to if somebody has, their permit has extended or has expired and they were going, and, and it's something that's reasonable, like they are making progress and they're, the door that they ordered didn't come in, and so we haven't closed it out, things like that, then we work with an applicant, because residential project, typically, they're done in a year. The commercial projects do have up to three years. So, it does just get to that point of, yeah, how to assure that we are seeing a project done. And like Mr. Craig said, you know, obviously, he wants to finish the project, too. We, but, yeah, that's just the situation that council gets put in.
I'm, I'm sure you will come back with a great recommendation, as you always do, so thank you.
Any further questions or comments? The motion is to extend the building permit with the reimbursement of the fee upon certification of occupancy, so as amended. All those in favor of that motion will say aye. Opposed, nay. Interim City Manager Bob Zine, please find out how we vote.
Okay. Beeler?
Oh, Councilman Beeler just texted me that he had to step away.
Okay, so, no Beeler, okay. Danforth?
Aye.
Pauline?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to item 12B, Authorization for the City to Declare the Current City Hall as Surplus and Authorization to Sell Through a Sealed Bid. Interim City Manager Bob Zine?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, in front of the council, now that the new city hall is nearing completion, it is time to determine how to handle this building. So, this motion will essentially surplus this building and then staff will go to work on getting all the paperwork ready to offer it up for sealed bid. Some of the timing is that we, as staff, hopefully are in the new city hall around that June timeframe, and then we still have some work to do to make sure all the documents and surplusing some of the furniture and stuff is done. So, we'll put a, probably an August 1st date of when whoever wants to buy this would have, take ownership, so. If there's any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'll, I'll kick it off as well with a little bit of information, because I know that I had asked for this, and I, I mean, and I'm with others as well, but I did some background information to justify where we got to this point of declaring it surplus. So, when we knew that we were going to be moving, we did not know what to do with this building, because the city doesn't have any identifiable need for the building currently, and we, not knowing what to do, we thought possibly someone might have value in it. As far as an alternate use for the city, some people had suggested a parking lot. However, again, this isn't a hardcore number, but I called up a couple contractors and just said, "Give me your best guess as far as demolition and hall costs on this building." And depending upon if the city did a lot of the work, it's ourselves, you're looking at a minimum of probably $200,000, possibly more. Then you have to pave it, and then I asked for, "How many parking spots would you get out of that?" And they were saying maybe about two dozen. So, you'd get maybe, you'd get about 22 to 24 parking spots out of this at the cost of probably $400,000, half a million. Seemed like a pretty expensive parking lot to me. I then contacted the Chief of Police as far as have they, and then also people at the city, have there had any complaints about parking? Really, the complaints about parking continue to be the people who live in apartments above downtown businesses who, who keep their cars out there for extended periods of time. And one of those things, we have eight parking lot, public parking lots already downtown that have way more than enough capacity to fit that if people just use them. The problem is they don't use them. So, that enters into the argument as far as, do you need a separate permit if you live in an apartment? We went down that road in the past, we never got to completion. But with that said, I also contacted Tim Sheehan over at the Chamber, asked him if there was any problems with Thursday Night Live, because that was obviously the largest parking impact in downtown and the closest to the downtown park where we, or Foundation Plaza, where we would have that. And he said he has not received a single complaint about parking. So, with that said, there didn't seem to be the need for a parking lot, it seemed expensive, so the idea is hopefully someone has an idea of what to do with this building or this property. So, we would declare surplus and see who would like to purchase it. So, that is the background information on that, and I would entertain a motion to declare this surplus. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Peters. Let's open it up for questions and comments. Councilman Danforth?
I got one question. The motion, actually, if I read it right, states we're listing it, we're denoting it as surplus, and we'll go out for sealed bids. So, let's say the whole sealed bid doesn't work out like what we want. So, is this dictating the method of sale with this motion, or should we just be declaring it surplus for sale?
So, this would donate it, or say that it's only by sealed bids? So, if the council does want us to have the option to do a auction or to go through a realtor, you would need to just say to sell it?
Well, and I, if I can, Mayor, I think the right way to do it is, is as we've noted, but I don't wanna have to come back to this if it doesn't work out like we hope it is, right? So, in order to give the most flexibility, if we have to go to a Plan B, would be to, to strike the method out of there, just declare it surplus for sale, we can make a determining the best method of that between staff and council, because if something changes, you know, we shouldn't have to bring it back here and have another motion to do this.
Right. And, and you would, it would come back before the council to accept whatever the bid is, essentially. So, if at that time you didn't accept it, is when you could proceed to tell us to move on to the next, I'm just saying, it doesn't, I'm open to you giving us the, the leeway now, but they would come back to you as a council to accept that bid. If at that time you rejected them, then you-
Like the flexibility, in case somebody comes with a really- I like the flexibility, in case somebody comes with a really good idea before that, and it changes our mind as to the method. Personally, I don't know how anybody else feels, but I like flexibility.
City Attorney Kirko?
Just remember that if you ever wanted to just list it for sale, you first have to attempt sealed bid or a public auction, under statute, so.
Okay.
When we're doing this flexibility, that, there's your flexibility, is sealed bid or auction.
So, this would be a first step, anyway?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah.
Whichever way it works, I just...
Yeah. Actually, that's a, Councilman Shuddy asked a question that is a good point. Go ahead, Councilman.
Well, yeah, then we might as well keep it as is, because I don't, I mean, and I've had some conversations about the differences between auction versus sealed bid, and if we feel like auction isn't the way to go, well, then, this is, this is the proper method, if we have to do this before we go to a potential next step.
Would that be correct, City Attorney Kirko?
That's typically how we've done it. That's also how we did it, I believe, on Wells Fargo, when we initially attempted to do that as well, to sell it. We did it by sealed bid, so that later, if we couldn't, you know, the bids didn't come out as we thought they would, we'll also have to do an appraisal, but we'll take care of that administratively.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if we would have to go sealed bid anyway, I guess I don't see the harm in keeping it.
Councilman Tupper?
Would the, if we declared it surplus and we went sealed bid, have to meet a certain percentage of appraised price?
It does. It is, uh, has to be within 90% of the appraised value. We don't disclose when, in a sealed bid process, we don't disclose, we have the number, but we don't disclose it, but it would need to come within that, yes.
That would probably fall under all three of those categories, I would imagine. Sealed bid, auction, or...
Yes, I mean, yes, even if you sold it by realtor, it would have to be within that appraised little amount.
Any further questions or comments? Motion is to declare the building surplus and potentially sell it through a sealed bid. All those in favor will say aye. Opposed, nay. Officer Bob Zine.
Okay. Danforth?
Yes.
Helene?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. So, item 12C is an approval of resolution requesting the South Dakota Department of Transportation hire Civil Design Incorporated to perform the 2025 Bridge Inspection Services for the city of Watertown. City Engineer Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the city selects, accompanied by form, bridge inspections. The city has 11 total bridges, and we inspect roughly half of them. In 2025, we'll have five bridges and culverts are inspected. CDI, Civil Design, Inc., has performed the inspections the last couple of years, and we, staff recommends continuing utilizing CDI services. Just to note that, through this bridge inspection program, it's an 80/20 split, so the city is responsible for 20%. Works out to be roughly $1,600, or in that range.
Thank you very much. Counsel, can I get a motion to approve this resolution? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Shuddy. Let's open it up for questions and comments. Hearing none, the motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12D is an authorization for the interim city manager to utilize contingency funds in the amount of roughly $41,000 for the repair of Watertown Fire Rescue Fire Truck Engine. Chief Roland.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. We had an unfortunate incident with one of our fire trucks here in the last two months. We were told by Titan that our engine is failed due to clean, our clean air filter allowed dust to get through into our crankcase and caused crankcase high pressure, and unfortunately, it's a complete engine failure. It dusted the engine, or basically caused the engine to get dirty oil in it, and basically, it's a complete failure. Now, we were told we can do a new engine cost, and it was like $60,000, or we can do an overhaul engine cost, and then, basically, we decided to go with the overhaul, and got a little better news just in the other day, that it looks like we're not going to have to do the turbos or the injector kit in it, so we might be able to drop this down to like $23,000 range. And after visiting with our CFO, interim city manager, we're going to probably just do a contingency of whatever the invoice is going to cost us. Is that correct? So, that's where we're at.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, can I get a motion to authorize the expenditure? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, second by Councilman Jerrance. Councilman Tupper.
Chief, will you explain? I think I know what you're talking about. When you say it was connected to your clean air, is that the hose that goes to it when it's in the building, or what?
No, it's, it's inside the engine itself, on the engine intake into the crankcase. You know what? I'm not a mechanic.
Well...
But it's not the one that, the hose you're talking about, no.
Okay, that's what I thought you were talking about, so.
No.
Because I thought, is that ever going to cause any more problems, so?
No, not at all.
And somewhat mechanically knowledgeable, but kind of threw me for a loop there, so...
I did get a notification from Spartan, although it's not under warranty, they are going, good faith, they're going to help pay for some of it, probably around that $5,700. I don't think I told CFO that yet, so, so it's good. We'll see.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I feel okay going with a voice vote. All those in favor of the authorization of the expenditure, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, we are on to city council member announcements and/or introductions. Oh, no, sorry, 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 sorry. Todd Kays, First District, you have your presentation. Thank you for catching that. Mr. Kays, thank you for waiting.
Thank you for inviting me. So, you guys have had a very long meeting, and I don't want to extend your pain any longer than necessary, because I know there's still some more business to be done after I'm speaking to you. So, what I would like to do is just spend a few minutes to talk a little bit about the First District Association of Local Governments, and who we are, what we do, and our relationship with the city of Watertown. I like to get out every year and talk to the city council directly, even though I'm speaking to all of you at one time or another, on various occasions throughout the year. This is also for the public's information as well. But the First District Association of Local Governments is one of six regional planning and development districts located across the state. We represent 11 counties and 76 municipalities up here in the northeast part of the state. We have sister organizations in Sioux Falls, Aberdeen, Yankton, Rapid, and, I don't have this thing set up here, sorry. And Rapid City, I can't use from current slide, there you go. We're not government, but we're creatures of government. We were created through executive order by Governor Frank Farrar in 1971. We operate under what's called a joint powers agreement through the state of South Dakota. The 11 counties basically own the planning district, and we only exist if six of those 11 counties renew their membership on an annual basis. Our mission today is what it was back in '71. We're out here to try to promote economic and community development, and improve the quality of life for all residents within the district. We have a 35-member board that meets twice a year. They provide direction to me, they hire me on an annual basis, or a director similar to me on an annual basis, and they approve our work plan and our budget for the year. Currently, the three representatives from Cottington County include Myron Johnson, Dan Shetty, and Michelle Kacakacek. As far as how we are funded, we have generally three streams of income that come into our office. Local government, all communities, with more than 100 people in all counties within the district, pay dues to our organization. We use those dues to match state and federal grant funding opportunities. We do about 19% of our revenue this year is going to coming straight through the state government. We do some state contract work, receive about 8% in federal grants into our organization, and this year, a little over a third of our income comes in for fee-for-service work, things such as the development of comprehensive land use plans, zoning ordinances, grant administration, and things like that. This year, we do have about a 20% line item in our budget for using our cash reserves. We built a building about five years ago, just north of the North Cowboy on Highway 81, and we had the opportunity to purchase that out from our partner, the First District Development Company, here in December, and so, now, we own the entire structure. It's kind of a cool deal. As far as our staff, currently, we have nine full-time employees with a little over 130 years of work experience. You can see from the chart, there's about three of us getting a little long in the tooth. I'll be 32 years here in May, didn't see that in 1993. But our staff, very, very growing, the new blood at the bottom of the, of the employee list are learning their jobs and their tasks, and they'll be the future of the district moving forward. As far as what we do, we're known for writing a lot of grant applications, loan packages for community and economic development projects. If those projects get funded, we're also very good at doing the red tape administration, because there really is nothing, is no such thing as free money, and all has strings attached to it. Planning and research is what I've done most of my professional life, worked in policy development, strategic planning, budgeting, human resource management, and the like. We also do a lot of several specialty areas, geographic information systems. We have four employees in our office, that's all they work is in GIS, and it's integral in everything that we do, from grant writing to project administration to planning, what have you. And then, also, within our organization, we also are kind of like a bank. We own and operate three revolving loan funds through the association, where we partner with local lending institutions and private businesses to expand job opportunities throughout our 11 counties. I always think there's a lot of things that I do that bring value, and other things that we do in the office to bring value to our members, but lots of times, the easiest way just to show is what we've been involved with from a project development standpoint. And throughout the planning district this year, we were fortunate to assist our memberships in obtaining about $84 million in grants and loans for a variety of projects. Most of this are water projects and sewer projects associated with ARPA, but we had about $42.3 million that just came into the district through grants. That's about $133 return on investment for every dollar's worth of dues generated. Since I've been the district director late 2008, we've been fortunate to assist with about $304 million, just in grants flowing into the coffers of our membership. We don't have that money, we know the closets, and we kind of sometimes know the secret knock to get in, and then, we just, hopefully, will help our, our members navigate and find a way to access those dollars for the investments. From a Cottington County standpoint this year, about $166,000 in different grants flowed into the county, and that's been about $34 million over the last 15 years, a $42 return on investment. Now, here in Watertown, it says, boy, only 55 cents for every dollar. That's a little bit misleading, because there was just recently an announcement on the $2.5 million grant that we haven't officially accepted from Economic Development Administration. So, absent that, this last year, for the city of Watertown, we did receive a little bit of federal dollars to help do some economic development planning here in the city of Watertown, so about 55 cents. But if we take a look at what we've been doing since fiscal year 2008, that's supposed to be to '20 through '24, spent about $150 for every dollar's worth of dues have come in to our organization based on Watertown activities. And then, I'm just going to briefly touch base on some work activities that we've been working on in Cottington County here over the course of the last year. Very much involved with planning and zoning at the Cottington County level, Luke Muller in our office is the zoning officer, he works as a conduit with city staff over here on a variety of planning and zoning issues. You take a look at those activities in Watertown, we maintain the city's GIS databases, we web-host GIS data for the city, and you can see, there's a lot of different grant administration projects going on between municipal utilities, as well as the city sanitary sewer departments. And then, the last thing I do, you see there in the green, is that we do have an ADA-approved $2.5 billion grant for the Calvin Park Economic Development Project that's going to be moving in forward, and you're going to be looking at needing to perhaps accept those grant dollars for that project. But you kind of know who we are, this is home, we're here, we like being in Watertown. Watertown is always at our beck and call, if you need something, we'll do it. We'll try anything once, and if we're not very good at it, we'll find somebody to do it for you. But again, I've really enjoyed our working relationship and our personal relationships I've had with all of you over my career here in Watertown, and we look forward to another fruitful, successful year for both the district and the city of Watertown. I'd be more than glad to take any questions.
And we thank you for all the work that you and everyone up does for Watertown and the surrounding area. The surrounding area is also a big one, because that helps Watertown as well.
Right.
Because a lot of people come in here from those other communities, so thank you for everything on that. We'll open it up for questions and comments. Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. And, yeah, thank you, Mr. Kays, for your work, and just being able to have a closer view of this, being on the board, that just the financial stability that you've, you've been able to lead the, lead First District in, and everything, all the, all the grants that you're, even helping us with the Calvin Park, that's a, that's a big win for the city of Watertown. I have a question on, been there 32 years, or something like that?
32 in May.
Okay, so, I'm just curious, when did you, what did you start, and what position? What was your ladder to where you're at today?
In 1993, about the same time I met you, Dan, I started working at the district, I was what was called just a community development specialist, which lasted about a year and a half, and then, I ended up becoming the planner for the office, which eventually became the senior planner, but I was the office of one, so it was really just more kind of a entitlement only, and I became the senior planner up until 2008, when I became the executive director.
All right, yeah, well, yeah, thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
I think his first position was guitarist, right?
Yeah, yeah. Dan was the drummer, and in the basement of... We were, when we were at city council member Jerrance and Dan's house, many...
Councilman Danforth.
And practice, yeah.
Well, I don't know anything about your guitar playing, but...
Just so you know, just Director Nichols probably knows some of that, too.
Well, Todd, we'll talk more about that later. Councilman Danforth, sorry.
We've worked together, known each other for a long time, not only just you and I, but your, your function, your department that you work with, and, you know, the, the return on investment that you denote here is just a small part of what you bring to our table to help us. Those are measurable, but there's so much input and insight that we get from you, and assistance in other ways, that it's not reflected in those numbers. And I have a high level of confidence and trust in what you guys do, and it means a lot on this side of the table, and I know it does to staff in helping, so I do appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. Very well appreciated.
Councilman Tupper?
I know there's two gentlemen sitting over there that, that run two departments, that their two departments be lost without the hard work and dedication that your GIS mapping service, or the gentleman that, that run that department. I mean, it makes their, their departments run pretty smooth with all the work you guys do behind the scenes, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Now, we are on to city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to say? Councilman Tupper?
Well, I'm going to take this time to, it's, it's been a lot of, a lot of thought over the last month or so, and my, my term will be up in, in July, and I've had a lot of people call me, a lot of people have stopped in to see me at work, and it's been pretty humbling, the number of people that have called me and stopped and seen me, so I have decided that I will seek another term on the city council, so I just thought I'd take this opportunity to make it public, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tupper. Is there any other announcements? Any city manager report? We do have a reason to go into executive session for a contractual issue, we will not be taking action once we come out, so therefore, I just wanted to let everyone know. And can we take a motion to move into executive session? Motion made by Councilman Tupper?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Shuddy. All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night, and God bless you, Watertown.
Good night and God bless you, Watertown.